Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 11th, 2023 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be coordinated by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ms. Sampson, will you please come to the podium and open up prayer for us tonight? Thank you.
Praise the Lord, everybody. Praise the Lord. What can I do, New Bern, to prove how well I love you? I pray for you, salute the flag above you, and praise you everywhere I roam, New Bern in my home. Heavenly Father, that I be for you in the precious name of Jesus. Lord, I thank you for your loving kindness and tender mercy. Thank you for grace, but most of all, for your Son, Jesus, who died on the cross and you may have a right and title to the tree of life. Heavenly Father, I go forth, Heavenly Father, I want to thank the brave men that brought me upstairs. For Heavenly Father, I thank the person that ordered this. So, I thank you for Johnny asking me to do this prayer. Oh, Father, as a special blessing, even to all of us, oh, Father, bless the boy, Heavenly Father, I ought to see their fishes on special way. Prayer to all of us, clean house, Lord Jesus, your new right spirit within us. And, Heavenly Father, we go forth tonight, Heavenly Father, let things be decent and in order, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, if we find any reason to disagree, Heavenly Father, let us go one accord. Father, we pray for the nation, Heavenly Father, the country. Heavenly Father, be issue for forgiveness of our sins, since we go forth for the night. Stand by us in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Praise the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so as we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Okay, Board, on the agenda, just want to bring to your attention, item number seven, staff has asked to pull that. There's some language that needs to be changed on the MOU, so when we get to the consent agenda, we'll need a motion to approve that, less number seven. That will be on our next agenda. With that being said, I look for a motion to approve the agenda. If there's not any changes.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Next is request and petition of citizens. We have Kristen Willis of 100 Cromwell Drive in Greenville, North Carolina.
Since May, Red Cross blood donor turnout has been lower than expected. As a result, we are now in critical need for donors in July. That is why I'm here tonight. We are partnering with the City of New Bern for our annual Battle of the Badges Blood Drive on Thursday, July 20th, at the Knights of Columbus from 7:30 to 5:30. Our mission is to collect 250 pints, and that can save up to 750 lives, but we need your help to make this happen. Each donation, which is one pint, can save up to three lives. Currently, we have 105 donors scheduled. If you would like to schedule a donation appointment, please do so on our sign-up sheet, which is located at the table by the door. Don't forget, your life-saving donation allows you to vote for your favorite hero, the police department or the fire department. All donors will receive a special Battle of the Badges T-shirt with the logos on the back of it, along with wonderful treats from our local restaurants here of New Bern. Now I'm going to turn it over.
I don't think I've been called a firefighter before in a very long time.
Good for you.
And I acknowledge, everybody loves a firefighter. I love firefighters, except on this day. On this date, we are trying to raise as many pints of blood, and we would like everyone to show up and vote for the police department, so that we can have bragging rights against our brothers in the fire service. Bless their hearts.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, thank you, Chief. We all love our police officers, too. But we've got a big, important reason we want to take this home this year. Our boss, Chief Boyd, Robert Boyd, is getting ready to retire, so we want to send him off with a good farewell, and we're going to bring it home this year with a win. So I'm pleading and asking more people to sign up, and when you sign up, please vote for the fire department. But it's a great competition between both of us, and what I really like about this competition is we're saving lives without putting our life in jeopardy by giving a little bit of blood. So this is the ultimate goal in our profession, is help our community and save lives, and this is the best way to do it, without even putting ourselves in any kind of jeopardy. But once again, vote for the fire department.
How about... Why don't you move the microphone away? You two guys arm wrestle and kick this whole competition off. Thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda. It's the pleasure of the Board, with the reminder that number seven is going to be pulled.
May I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, less item number seven?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 10, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to rezon properties on Washington Post Road identified as tax parcels ID 8223003 and 8223004, and Ms. Jessica Rue is going to make this presentation.
Thank you. Yes, we have public hearings scheduled for three separate rezonings this evening. Thank you for that introduction. Our first one will be a rezoning request to go from R10A residential to R8 residential. This application was submitted by Eric Remington of Warden Smith on behalf of the property owners who are Stars and Stripes for FLLC. This is for two parcels. They total approximately 20.44 acres, and they're located on the east side of Washington Post Road and the intersection with Olivia Road. Currently, the property is undeveloped, although it is part of a planned unit development, and I'll speak to that later in the presentation. It has utility services all provided by the City of New Bern and fire service available from our Elizabeth Avenue Station. And I'm going to call out some notable features on the property. First, there's no blue line streams on any of the 20.44 acres, and there's no regulated flood zones on the property, so that does prime it for higher-density development. Environmental concerns, such as the presence of wetlands, I'm calling out as a reminder, are evaluated through our development review process. They are not something that we look at when we consider making a zoning change, and that's because when you have those environmental impact studies done, they expire. They don't last for a long time, so they're done when you're closer to making the concrete development plans. And, as mentioned earlier, these parcels are included in a planned unit development. This was reviewed in 2007. That is when the current zoning was applied to this property of R10A. And then in 2008, when this whole area was, Lake Tyler was developed, these two parcels are identified for multifamily development in one of the parcels and for commercial and other residential development, and that was in a planned unit development approved by our planning board in 2008. So that right now, that approval would still apply to this property, should the developers want to pursue that route. If they would like to change those plans, they would have to follow the process of going back to the planning board and asking for that planned unit development to be amended. This is our current zoning. You can see it is all R10A. Again, that zoning district was applied there in 2007, and the two parcels up front there are on Highway 43, so any development review that might be done for development in this area down the road, whether the zoning changes or not, would be subject to DOT comment and requirements. I'm going to really diverge a little from what I normally do and look at this actual property a little more when comparing the two zoning districts. Right now, today, this is zoned R10A. That is a district that allows one-family homes, two-family homes, and multifamily development, i.e. apartments. So the zoning, as it stands today, does allow apartments out there, being that you have to meet a 10,000-square-feet requirement for the first unit, and then each additional unit you may add requires 5,000 more square feet. The requested change is very, very, very similar to the zoning that is currently there. In fact, all the uses are the same. What changes is, at multifamily development, you require 8,000 square feet to start, and then 4,000 square feet for each additional unit, and that's how our ordinance is laid out. So that makes a little bit of a difference, adding some density at 10.6 units per acre, where back here we were at 8.5 units per acre. This comes straight out of the zoning section of our land use ordinance, R10A versus R8. Those are the requirements that I just explained. And to take a very little approach, because I didn't want anyone to ask me to do math on the fly, we put an example up here. So if we were to change the zoning from where it is today at R10A to R8, this is what would happen. This is a very, very literal math calculation up here. It does not include that you need to accommodate parking spaces, or roads, or driveways, or buffers, or any amenities that typically come with multifamily development, so that takes out a lot of that square footage. But if you were to run the math, this is the difference, a result of approximately 45 more units being able to go in there. So anytime we look at zoning changes, we look at the consistency with our land use plans. This area is covered by two of our land use plans, our 2022 Land Use Plan Update, which has it in the 43 focus area, which really facilitates development and growth, and also in our 2010 Land Use Plan, which has this described as an urban transition, which describes up here, the classification describes areas on the periphery of developed zones that are poised for future growth. Our Planning and Zoning Board defined that those land use classifications are consistent with the requested change. The reason for that being, at the limited 20.44 acres, it can be viewed as an expansion of residential development with a growing area. This area would be a classic crescendo of density, which is very classic planning practice, where you put the higher-density development closer to the road, and you decrease the density as you move back from that main road. They discussed that. The proposory zoning, again, is consistent with the North Carolina 43 focus area in the 2022 Land Use Plan, and is consistent with the urban transition in the 2010 Land Use Plan, generally consistent with the character of the area based on adjacent land uses. To clarify what the Planning and Zoning Board meant by that, there's a variety of zoning districts in this area already. There's the R10A, which most of is developed under a planned unit development from 2008, but there's also some denser development, there's a mobile home park in the vicinity, and there's industrial in the vicinity, as well as non-participating area outside of the city limit. And so, the Planning Board also discussed that this change may be consistent with the community's desire to be able to provide housing at a more variety of price points, and for that reason, on June 6th, the Planning and Zoning Board did unanimously recommend that you adopt this rezoning request. That concludes my staff report.
Does the Board have questions for staff before we have a public hearing?
Has the developer identified exactly what would be developed on that property?
The applicant is here, and I think when they make a statement that, let's give them a stab. I have not been presented plans with exactly what would go on that property if it was rezoned.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
More questions?
Jessica, could you just review more for the benefit of those in the audience that I think would be interested in understanding the process? Can you just briefly review the development process? Once the owner submits a development plan, what happens?
Sure. So anytime you're doing multifamily development or commercial development, regardless of the zoning district, we're going to bring you in, and you are subject to our Development Review Committee, which is the collection of almost all of our utility and development department heads within the City of New Bern. Also, comment is provided by the fire department and the police department, and also our partner agencies like NC DOT, and they are all given an opportunity to comment on the plan and come in and review the plans. Once those comments are made and collected, sometimes additional requirements go on there. Sometimes NC DOT will ask for a traffic study, or sometimes the fire department will ask for a wider road, or a larger cul-de-sac, or something of that nature. Those things are typically all summarized and then sent back, and we give the applicant an opportunity to revise those plans, and then once they come back and are meeting those requirements, and sometimes this takes a while, and they have that assurance that it's meeting those things, that typically kicks in environmental permitting. Anything that is over an acre in the state of North Carolina has to go to the state for environmental permitting and for stormwater reviews and things like that. So when those plans are drawn up, they are sent there, that typically kicks in that process of their review, which can take quite some time, depending on the agency, and it seems to be taking longer and longer lately. And then you go on to the next body that gives you your approval. In the case of a planned unit development, that would be the planning board. Once all those revisions were made and permits were tracking from the state agencies, it would go to the planning board for review. Also, if you previously got an approval and wanted to change something on it, you would go back to that agency that issued that initial approval. If you were needing a special-use permit, which, just for everyone's knowledge here, all apartments in the City of New Bern in every zoning district, except NC3, are required to get a special-use permit from our Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment has some powers that we do not have here at this level to put on additional conditions on a special-use permit, which may be things like additional buffers, or sound mitigation, or things like that, that may not be called out specifically on our ordinance, if they find them to be fair and will make a better project. So those are pretty much the two ways things could track. Here in the City of New Bern, we do not have conditional zoning, in some places, that's an option. That's a situation where the project and the rezoning would come to you to review together. However, that's not something that is currently allowed under our current ordinance, but we may look at possibly adding in as we start our ordinance update, and I hope that answered your question.
Yes, just a couple more follow-up questions. When staff or the Development Review Committee gets together, is the public able to attend that meeting or those meetings?
We have recently started sending out our Development Review agendas to our Sunshine list, so yes, it is not typical when you have those types of meetings that the public attends, but we would welcome them to come in, because we are providing those notifications.
Okay. And if, well, a special-use permit that goes to the zoning board adjustment...
That is correct.
...would the public have an opportunity to voice concerns at that meeting?
Correct. A special-use permit will always require a quasi-judicial hearing. It's a slightly more formal process than a planning board approval, so four out of the five voting members, or three out of the five voting members, depending on what you're voting on, would need to affirmatively agree on all those conditions and the approval of that project.
And when the plan makes its way to the Planning Commission, Planning Board, public hearing would be held, so the public would have an opportunity at that point to have input?
That's right, and all of our Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board meetings here are open to the public, and we will take comment at them.
And if a resident wanted to get on a mailing list to be notified of when each of these steps are taken, does the city maintain such a list?
Absolutely. All of our agendas that are generated out of Development Services are sent out to our Sunshine list, so they probably get more agendas than they care to see, but we do do our best to solicit that community engagement and feedback.
So people that want to get on that list need to be proactive and provide you with a contact email, so that they will be notified?
Absolutely, and they can do that through the city clerk, or they can do that by calling Development Services.
All right. Thank you.
Board, any more questions? Okay, at this time, I will open a public hearing on item number 10. Anyone that would like to speak for or against this project, please come forward to the podium. It would be helpful if you provide your name and address for the record, and state your reason.
My name is Wayne Faith.
Come on up to the microphone, sir, because if you don't speak right in this, folks on TV won't hear.
I'm against this proposal. She brought a really good point. She says, we could bring 200 and something families into that section that's already developed by Horton for all the single-family homes, that I would ask for a question, like, how many of those would be paying taxes for home tax? Like, we are vested in this town. The people she's bringing in will need more services, more water, more power, more police service, all services, and they're not paying taxes for it. They will not pay taxes. There'll be guests. So that's why I'm against this proposal, whatever it do to our community.
Okay.
My name is Wayne Faith. It's 400 Genie Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Harold Simmons. My wife of 53 years is right here beside me, as usual. In July of 2022, we purchased a home at 525 Dakota Avenue out there at Lake Tyler in the subdivision. We've heard that there's a major construction project being considered on the property adjoining our subdivision. Vicky and I would like for someone to explain to us in an honest and simple terms what the proposed project is to be, and how it will affect our property values and the quality of life we enjoy in the Lake Tyler subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brian Monsour. I live very close to this proposed subdivision addition. My concern is the traffic. Any of you know that have been on Washington Post Road? I've been there for a long time, saw this development being built by Mr. Dunn back in the day. During that time of the meeting, they said they were going to do a study, and once the subdivision reached a certain amount of density, there was going to be a traffic light put in, either it be at Lake Tyler or Gracie Farms. We have witnessed hundreds and hundreds of accidents out there. We can't hardly get out of our driveway. People come out of that subdivision just rolling. They don't even hit the brakes. I've seen them pull out in front of log trucks. I have no problem with the density number that she gave, but I do know that it's going to be more people. Feel free, if you want to ride back there through Lake Tyler, the streets are very narrow. Most people have an extra car parked on the street. You can't even drive down the street through there now. So I think something should be studied as far as a traffic light, or something to keep everyone safe when they come in and out of that subdivision, especially if you're adding more people in an apartment, that would, you know, everybody's going to have a car. You pretty much figure every person has a car, and that's my major concern with it. So I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Board. My name is Ed J. Pay. I've lived on Gracie Farm over two years. I've seen a lot devastated. I had a woman got hit by a car, 900 feet, there was a traffic light, no traffic light, 900 feet, see, a car got crushed. They survived. Month later, same incident, hit of fatality. A month after that, my truck got totaled, totaled, okay? Baricaded the place off of garbage cans, called the cops. My house is here. New Bern police came, and Craven County police came. That's absurd. To me, it's absurd. I mean, Craven County is this way, and New Bern's this way. So anyways, to make a long story short, the gentleman who spoke is absolutely right. It's a highway. I mean, from my house to that stop sign is 900 feet. They go 900 miles an hour, and something's going to be done. I've called Craven County Police Department, and they said, we have a very large area we have to control. Well, that being said, if they stood there one night, they would get their protocol for tickets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Faith.
I also live at 400 Genie Drive. The traffic is unbelievable. I'm surprised there haven't been more deaths. It's very hard to get out, even if you turn into the turning lane to get out. People honk at you, come very close to you. 277, that's 277 more cars, at least. Also, our school districts, from what I've been told, are overcrowded. You're going to be putting more children into the school system, more traffic. I would like to see it remain residential. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wes Watson. I as well live in Lake Tyler Development. I just want to reiterate what was said by this gentleman back here, in that our traffic issue over there is, right now, is treacherous. Sometimes it can take us 10 to 15 minutes making a left-hand turn out of the development to get onto 43, and currently, we're looking at a drag strip in front of Speedway, where it goes from two lanes to one, coming across, what is that, News Boulevard, or wherever that is, we may go right over there, and it's, there's just not a good way of putting it as to what the impact's going to be when we put that development. I understand progress, time marches forward, houses are going to be built, apartments are going to be built, but I think maintaining the current zoning with a lower density gives us a quality of life that we can at least adjust to without putting more lives at risk out there with that traffic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name's Deborah Grant. I live at 206 Frida Road, right on the front lines of all of this. My question is, is the green where the roads would go? I have seen a site plan that shows that a rotary will be there, and from a personal point of view, I don't want the 400 houses behind me coming, making a throughway there. I don't understand what the need is for the two communities to be connected. Lake Tyler is a certain community. This proposed residential area is not connected to Lake Tyler at all. We have children who play on those streets. The streets, if people park their cars, are barely wide enough for the finer engines to get by. God forbid there be an emergency, and you're going to add all 400 houses that finished the rest of the development to now use that excess? I don't understand the reasoning to that, and I would like very much for someone to explain that to me, in terms of why are the roads going through, why the need for the connection to Gracie Farm Road from Olivia Road?
From a staff perspective, can you clarify? I believe the green line is the property line. Can someone verify that?
That's correct.
Okay, it's just the green line is the property.
But the site plan I have seen is showing roads, and a road going right exactly between the sales and the pool, that's going to connect... the sales and the pool, that's going to connect over and then around about, about 100 feet from my home. So I'd like, I'd like more information and perhaps a better idea of where the, this is going to take place. What are the roads going to look like? Will a fence be erected to divide the properties? Will all of the beautiful trees, which there have been a number of habitats that live there, deer, I've personally seen deer, rabbits, and we think we saw a bobcat paw once. Owls, for instance, we've heard from there. I'd like to know what's going to happen if the EPA is going to be involved in checking these wetlands. I, I have concerns for flooding if all those trees are taken down coming into my property. I think there's a lot more that needs to be studied, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Board. Thank you for taking the time to even hear us out, we do appreciate that. My name is John Adams, I live at 406 Frida Road. Something that kind of disturbed me was that a lot of the zoning talks prior to this, which is customary in the process of, of how the zoning developer or the developer is trying to go about their process and moving forward, they asked for a continuation at one of the meetings, an understanding that would be adopted into the understanding of, I believe it was the 22 or the 2010, excuse me, 2007 zoning planning, of what their goal was, what they attained, what their vision was for this area that has been set forth either by your panel or by the zoning committee itself. And when they asked for that continuation, they did so without the understanding of what the locals or what the board had even taken in consideration or that thought process of what they had planned. The reason for that and the thought process behind it, legal consideration, was that they could then move with more speed throughout this process. By having that zoning committee approve that thought process and support the movement of R10A to R8 would then move it faster. And by doing so, that just made the process a little bit harder for the community. When we come up here and we present our cases and we state all of these issues that are going on with the police department, with the fire control, something that hasn't been mentioned was the rolling blackouts that have been going on, whether it's on the Craven County with Duke Energy or it be in, on our side with New Bern City Utilities. They're saying that this is going to add to New Bern City Utilities, so with that consideration, are we able to, to take on that threshold? I know that a lot of the new things that people are adopting, the electric cars, it's putting more of a strain on everyone's electric. So with that being thought process, if we're doing this and the thought process of what this development or developing area could be, now the consideration is, well, they're planning or they're identifying specific numbers, like 244 specific units, when, is that the actual number that they're going to stop at or can they go higher? And if that is the case, what would stop them from making that dollar in the end? The thought process to me, when I see these things, is how can I develop that and make even more money as the developer? What can I do to get that money rolling for myself? Unfortunately, I, I am that thought process and that's the, the thoughts that are going, but with the consideration for that many more individuals, 244 units, to me, this is considered just outside, just near military installations, just near Greenville, just on the outside where it's very accessible for families to commute to all these different places. I don't see 244 cars. I see double that, if not triple, because that's already what's going on inside of our development of Lake Tyler. We have plenty of military families that are coming in and giving this beautiful city the, the credit that it's due, but unfortunately, if we're going to add that many more personnel and that much more strain on our utilities capabilities, without even developing the areas that already need the attention, like what was identified by them was the trailer park that is near us, or some of the industrial areas that are over there, we have an entire western New Bern that can get more attention than that upfront area. But if that's what you deem what you want to do, as we all voted, as locals that we are, to put you where you are, we hope that it remains in your mindset for what we would like as the community that has to deal with this on a day-to-day basis. Thank you for your time, I truly appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, because I'm going to speak later on, I know from my own neighborhood, which is just, you know, you know, one long street with a cul-de-sac and stuff, you know, we have cars coming in off Oaks Road at 35 miles an hour, and then they don't slow down until they get to the cul-de-sac, where they have to slow down anyway to go around the, there's a little roundabout there, and they go through, you know, at much slower speeds. So I did ask at one point in time that we put up more children at play signs and posted at the, at the roundabout that the speed limit was 25 miles an hour. And ironically, I looked up in the means on the back end of that street, Trappers Trail, was never up, was never changed to 25 miles an hour. It's still, it's not always. But at the end of the day, nothing happened, and I went out and bought more signs myself and posted them, children at play, because it bothered me that much, not even the hat kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Maureen Wallenford, 409 Frida. So I just wanted to point something out, out to you guys. While we're talking about building the new commercial and residential apartments, I'd also like you guys to keep in mind that our development, Lake Tyler, is not yet completed. We have, I believe, 335 homes in there already. There are still 99 lots, I believe, that are not developed. They can't sell the lots due to the cost of the lots. They're still looking for a new home builder to come in and build on those lots as D.R. Horton has pulled out. Keep that in mind, as we have 222 cars, double that, maybe even triple that, but there'd be another 300 cars once that neighborhood is completed. Our neighborhood is yet to be completed. So by, by the time this is all said and done, that area is looking to have, what, 750, maybe 1,000 vehicles, plus the commercial in that area, using one little access road, Olivia, maybe a little section between Olivia and Gracie Farm to access Washington Post Road. Think about what it is that it's doing, what it's doing to our neighborhood, our utilities. We do know that times are changing, development's going to happen, but as somebody that just moved to this area, New Bern's great. When we purchased our house, both Realtors said there was going to be no development. Now, we all know Realtors lie. It's part of it. Business people lie, they kind of flip the truth a little bit, tell you what you want to hear, but please, please, think about what it is that you guys are doing, because now we're looking at a potential almost 750 to 1,000 more vehicles, 500 to 1,000 more people in that small little area, small little area of Lake Tyler. Think about it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Mahakis, I do not live on Washington Post Road, I avoid that road at all costs because you're taking your life in your own hands and at very great peril if you ever have to make a left turn to get back on it. That said, I'll go right into the fact that I'm not real savvy about building developments, apartment buildings, duplexes, single building houses, but I'll tell you what I am well-versed in. After 36 years of living in New Bern, I'm well-versed in Board of Aldermen's and Mayors. And I've seen them come, I've seen them gone, and now I'm looking at a brand-new bunch. Every time a brand-new neighborhood was built and incorporated into the city New Bern, we were told by Aldermen's and Mayors that, oh, this will bring in more tax revenue so we can invest into our older neighborhoods and improve our infrastructure. Well, Greenbrier was built, nothing improved in the older neighborhoods. DeBurney was built, nothing was, and nothing of the infrastructure was improved in the older neighborhoods. Caroline Colours was built, nothing was improved in the infrastructure in the older neighborhoods. And we've watched more and more and more building, and we still have older neighborhoods with terracotta sewer pipes that are falling apart, water lines that are deteriorating that don't work very well. So, you want to go ahead and improve 250 more housing units? Well, that's fine, but how in the world do you intend to fix that mess when it grows old and deteriorates, when you can't fix the messes you have now? So keep that in mind, the bigger you get doesn't mean the better you get, and you already have your hands full with older neighborhoods that are being neglected, and that's not going to get any younger once it's built. So think carefully as you develop. Thank you.
Thank you.
As y'all know, I am Antoinette Boski, and I reside at 4766 Corina Drive, so not in Lake Tyler, but on the other side of Planners Ridge. And when I came in, I heard somebody mentioning how hard it is to turn left, let me tell you, it's even harder to turn right. It's just as hard, and you better put your foot to the gas because you're going to pray that somebody don't hit you, right? Not to mention all the 18-wheelers that come through. So the traffic is one thing, and when I learned about this particular project, it was interesting because we had just had two accidents right in front of our neighborhood in a matter of two weeks. So when we think about, and, and please know, everybody knows I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, I know we need housing here, I know that it takes two and a half minimum wage jobs just to pay for the houses here. So I, I think we do need affordable housing, I just don't think this is the spot. Not just thinking about the traffic, but also thinking about the parking, can our school system handle it? Come on, we already redistricted, send our kids instead of one of James Levy Smith to Oaks Road, can our school system handle it? Because those kids go to West Craven Middle and West Craven High School, Mom here. I want us to think about, I guess in my mind, I know that all these different entities don't always work together and talk, the road is the state, da-da-da-da-da, but I feel like somehow if really want this to happen, there does need to be a study of that road, and does, does that mean that there would be a need for an expansion or something like that? I don't know, I don't work in road stuff, right? I think that there does need to be a study of our school system. Can it really handle it? And if it can, and this is really what you want to do, then let's develop a plan that's not just put these houses up here, but a plan that looks at it comprehensively, because frankly, I do like my little neighborhood without 250 people across the street from me, which is definitely, I mean, I hear 250, and I know that, y'all, that's a lot of kids if we're talking affordable housing and families. That's all I want to put out there. So don't let a good intention, in the words of Mike Morgan, Mark Morgan, don't let a good intention pose a negative outcome for us.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Scott Cisco, I live at 304 Frida Road. I come before, before you today in opposition to this. I have no objection to the current owner of the two parcels developing them as they currently are zoned. It was understood when I purchased my property in Lake Tyler that these properties could be developed, but to the same point, the current owner who bought the properties in question understood what those areas were zoned for. But I think the larger question is, what is the plan for this property? How many units will be built? Are three-plus-story apartment buildings going to be built? Will they be looking down our backyards, eliminating whatever privacy we may have? What would be the impact on traffic in the area? Why the need for the zoning change unless it is to put denser housing in a suburban area consisting only of one and two-story homes? We live in this area to not be surrounded by dense housing, as I'm sure this is why most residents of Lake Tyler also live there. There are many questions that I have as a resident of the neighboring community as to what impact any change will have on the area, and it would make sense that very specific development plans would be presented and any concerns would be addressed before considering a zoning change. I respectfully ask that you represent the interests of your constituents who live in and enjoy New Bern and not the interests of one developer who has no lasting interest in the future of the area by rejecting the zoning change or at least tabling it until more detailed plans for the land are received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'd like to call on the lady sitting back there. New Bern High School last year brought in 200 freshmen. 200 freshmen last year.
Anyone else that would like to come forward, speak for or against?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ward. Kind of a last-minute thing, with all my statistics on my desk, because I got called in early this morning and worked overtime, so I'm going to be very general about a few things. We've talked about traffic, but what I haven't heard mentioned is any plans for expanding on 43 and 55. If I'm correct, sometime in March, apparently the traffic signals changed. Now, you have, currently on 43 heading towards 55, you have two left-turn lanes, a straight and a right-turn lane at 43. Traffic at times, all the way through 8:30 in the morning, can be backed up beyond Lake Tyler because of the funneling effect of cars trying to turn left towards downtown. This prevents vehicles from being able to go straight or turn right onto 55. This is a rather serious traffic issue for people trying to leave Lake Tyler or the trailer parks or any other road there. In addition, my house, by the way, I'm sorry, Clarence Brown, I live at 300 Wheezy May Way, looking on the map there, my property abuts right up against where they are drawing the line for the expansion zone. We moved, relocated from Chicago, Illinois, I used to work at Mount Sinai, I decided to leave after the second resident got mugged just crossing the street. Having moved down here, reminds me of where I used to live in Virginia, Makosen, right next to Langley, streams, wildlife everywhere. My wife now loves getting up in the morning, looking out beyond our fence and seeing rabbits, deer, and the occasional owl in the backyard. Problem we have is, and somebody's information is, is incorrect either from Stars and Stripes or D.R. Horton, we were told that because of the easement and the quote-unquote wetlands, nobody could build behind us. This was a selling point for our land. We were the fifth house in that community, eighth overall if you count on the other side of the lake. So this was a very strong selling point for us buying the house. If this means the woods are going to be torn apart for apartments or any other residential, it's going to be a problem for us. Now, the young lady spoke that the woods back there that are outlined in aqua or teal is not a flood zone. I don't think anybody in, in that company has ever been there after either a spring shower or a heavy rainfall. Standing water is a norm for that area. If you ever looked at the trees, they almost look like mangrove roots because the trunks are supported by the roots above the waterline. I would suggest or ask that somebody actually do some type of study, one on the traffic and one on the wildlife and the waters, the standing water situation back there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. My name's Eric Remington, and I'm the applicant in this case. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ford and Smith located out near the community college, and I'm representing Stars and Stripes for FLLC tonight, and I do want to, to address this application. I think the staff report was fairly thorough, and this is a pretty straightforward request. Ask that the board keep in mind that this is a rezoning, this is not a site plan approval process, and so as Alderman Prill brought up, and the staff mentioned, there is a significant amount of other procedures that would need to go through in order for a, a specific site. for a, a specific site plan to be approved in this case. I want to introduce, uh, some folks that I have with me. I have, uh, Wade Miller, who is with, uh, the Director of Real Estate for the applicant. Um, I've got Sean Scanlon, who is the Director of Development for the applicant, also Tyler Johnson, who is the VP of Development for the, for the applicant, and then John Thomas, who's been, uh, the project engineer and has been helping out. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to, uh, them to speak a little bit, and then I'm going to follow up with some comments, if that's all right, and I'd like to reserve some time to do that.
Sure.
Good evening, Board, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tyler Johnson, with, uh, represent the owner of Stars and Stripes. Um, I would like to just take a moment and kind of step back and, and talk about where the community was when Stars and Stripes took over and acquired the property in 2016 and bring this up to today. Um, at that time, there were only 16 homes in the community. Uh, it was originally developed in 2009. Uh, it sat vastly barren and almost as if, uh, it was a desert for those years. When Stars and Stripes came in, uh, the roads were overgrown, sidewalks were overgrown, an extreme amount of stormwater infrastructure was, repair was needed. Um, upon entry, you were met with a, an abandoned home. Since we have come in and invested into the property, um, we have brought 300 homes to New Bern. We have built a beautiful pool amenity. Uh, we have assisted in a new entry, entry signage, rebranded the community. Um, we've cleared away all of that landscape. It's now a beautiful place to live. Um, we're, we're very proud of this community, and we're dedicated to it. Um, you know, many developments will come in, build the homes and leave. We're, we're not doing that. We're dedicated, we're here to stay, and we're moving forward, uh, and, and excited to continue this progress, uh, within Lake Tyler. Um, market data that we pulled just yesterday, July 10th, showed us that Craven County is at a deficit right now of almost 900 homes. 500 of those 900 fall within New Bern. Uh, the 2022 Land Use Plan that recently came out targets this area specifically that, that there's a, a great need for homes in this area. Um, it also, this, this area is convenient to five major employers within New Bern. Um, and it, it creates the di, uh, a divi, a diverse, uh, housing type that, that 2022, 2022 Land Use Plan, uh, lays out. In addition to that, I would just like to follow up and confirm a couple of things. This is, a, a report recently came out calling this a affordable housing community. Uh, it's, it's not affordable. We like to say that this is an attainable housing community, uh, or apartment complex. Uh, it's not HUD, not affordable. Uh, our intent here is to create a place where working families of New Bern can reside. Uh, we, I just went through the stats. We need homes here, uh, and we aim to provide those. In addition to some of the, the commentary tonight, it's not 250 new homes. We've already approved with the current zoning for 177. This is a simple addition. Uh, we're rezoning one notch from R10A to R8, uh, which would be a max addition of, of 45. Uh, as has been mentioned by staff and my colleagues here, we're at step number one. This is rezoning 50,000 feet. There are many, many steps to go through the details here. Um, that 45 may come down to 30, 20, we don't know. Buffers will come in, that, all of the, the detail of the plan, it, it's been brought up many times here. Uh, the, the detail is the next step. That's where we go into the engineering and, and determine the roads and roundabout, which was a concept, you know, these things will all fall into place after this step. So again, I, I just, you know, would, would, uh, ask your approval of this tonight so we can move forward, uh, and continue to bring homes to New Bern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board members. Um, my name is John Thomas. I'm with Thomas Engineering here in New Bern. I've been coming before this board for about 40 years now. The reason I know that is because we celebrated our 40-year anniversary last month. Um, most of these rezones that I've been to, uh, on behalf of my clients, in the last 20 or so years, and every time, it's a packed house. And, uh, I'm not sure we may start moving to the convention center with a number of people showing up. The, the staff made a really good presentation. Everything that need to be talked about was in their presentation, all the boxes were checked, the planning board approved it, and I thought it was very well put together, so I'm not going to reiterate everything that was in, in there. Whenever we look at rezones, we look at what's the worst thing you can do in there, whether it's commercial, residential, whatever, and in, in this case, it's multifamily. And you start running the numbers, and the numbers do get, get pretty big. As Ms. Rue said, it's just a slight increase to go from the R10A to the R8. Just to give you some comparisons, we are asking R10A to R8, we're not asking for R6, and we're not asking for commercial. Um, when we were doing the Bryce's Crossing, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with that development on the rezoning, all the DeBurna people showed up, okay, for the Bryce's Crossing here, and we requested R8 there. DeBurna is R8. The adjacent to Bryce's Crossing, when we did that rezoning to R8, people from DeBurna and Bryce's Crossing showed up, as these fine people did for that hearing, and we were granted R8. When we did Blue Horn Rise to R8, which is a rather large development, 500, 600 acres there, potential 1,000 lots to go in there. Some DeBurna, Bryce's Crossing, and Party Farms people showed up for that hearing, and we were granted R8 for that. Carolina Colors, we weren't involved in that, but the majority of Carolina Colors is R8. There's a lot of R8 out there, seem to be very popular. Um, rarely did multifamily, or how many units can you get in there, come up. That seemed to be a good fit for what we were asking for in, in those communities. West New Bern, which is a very nice development, is R6 and C3, okay? There's a development in there that comment folks did, an apartment complex, and unless I've got my information incorrect, there's, um, 224 apartments on 11 acres, that's 20 units per acre in that development, and it fits, it works. We're half of that on what we're requesting, if we decide we want to go for the multifamily. A big portion of Craven Forest was granted R6, a big acre, uh, not too long ago. This is a PUD, it's a Plan Unit Development. It's not a HUD, HUD Unit Development, it's a PUD, Plan Unit Development. In a Plan Unit Development, you can do various things in there, and the purpose of the Plan Unit Development is to have a mix of different things in there, which is what we're planning to do. The area that we're asking to have rezoned is in sort of a transition area between the single family and a very busy NC43. Uh, the request to get R8 in there to possibly do multifamily, if that's what my client decides they're going to do, is a good fit in that transition from the multifamily over to, uh, to the highway. I think that, uh, R10A to R8, I think that's a reasonable request. I think it's fair, and in looking at all the other developments that we're in competition with that are very near us and across the river, I think that, you know, we would request that you approve this and level the playing field out a little bit. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, Board, my name is Sean Scanlon, Director of Development for Stars and Stripes. Just like to reiterate and follow up that all the concerns that came from your constituents today are absolutely understood and are basically the same of all the different developments that I work on currently throughout North Carolina and throughout the United States. Traffic, traffic, traffic. What I need to, to let these fine folks know is that nothing in development, first of all, is easy. We cannot go in and turn a blade of anything, and if you think we can, then, then please tell me where to go, and I would love to work in that county. We are subject to very stringent reviews from all the multi-agencies throughout the state. NCDOT happens to be one of my specialties for this particular reason. Coming into communities that are already existing, that maybe didn't have the infrastructure and the plan in place, and it just never got done, it was never even required. I just want to make sure that the board knows, especially your constituents, again, that anything that gets pushed through the next level here will be under strict scrutiny with respect to stormwater, wetlands, the traffic studies, all that kind of thing. This is just to get us a baseline, to then allow us to get to more of a substantive detailed plan once we have all those metrics met and all the different things that may come along. The approval that was done back in the day, whenever the original approval was done, we need to look at how this integrates into the existing roadway plans and things like that, and the existing drainage plans and things of that nature, but can assure everyone in this room, as far as your constituents and, and, and obviously the board here, that this will all be done to the highest standards and the strictest standards as required by the state and every state and multi-agency, including your town. So, please, we just want these folks to know that we are good stewards. I am the on-the-ground guy, I will be here. I've met with, uh, most everybody in your utility department today. Fantastic people. We, we, we worked through a lot of things, a lot of the que, questions, concerns, and we're going to start nailing them down one at a time, and we're going to start to bring this forward. So, everything these folks have talked about, we've got our eyes on and ears on, and we're going to make sure that it gets addressed regardless of what happens here tonight. So, I appreciate your time, I hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
I would kind of summarize some things for the board and, and the mayor. Want to talk about the fact that, uh, you know, of course, New Bern has rules and regulations that regard development of property in, in the areas in New Bern. And what those rules and, and regulations state is there are certain things that you all should consider when you're considering a rezoning. This is, again, a fairly straightforward application, uh, requesting a, a residential zoning district change from 10A down to 8, uh, but it's still residential. And as the staff showed in one of their slides, when you compare the two together, and, you know, the, the specific uses, there's a table of those in, in the ordinance. Uh, when you compare the specific uses that can happen in R10A versus those that can happen in R8, they are identical. There's not any that are different, and they're, they're exactly the same. Their permitted uses are all the same, the special uses are all the same, every use is the same. Uh, so there's no difference in the uses between R10A and R8. There's no difference in the intent. Each of the districts has certain intent, uh, requirements that are listed in the ordinance, and each of those requirements that's in R10A is in, in R8, so all of the intent is the same. Um, the, really, the, the one difference is the, the, um, 10,000 square feet versus 8,000 square feet. When you all are deciding whether you should rezon this property, you're supposed to look at certain things as to whether it's reasonable or not. One of those criteria is the size of the tract. Well, this is a 20-acre tract, and a 20-acre, and it's right now divided into two different parcels. Uh, the 20-acre tract is a reasonable size for a project, uh, for multifamily. It's also a reasonable size for other uses that are available under the, the, um, current zoning. Uh, you should look at the benefits that, that this provides, and, you know, um, Mr. Johnson also talked about the fact that this provide, that, you know, there's housing shortage here in New Bern, and that this would provide needed housing. You've got five major, uh, employers within several miles of this. You've got, uh, BSH, you've got the hospital, you've got Moen, you've got, uh, the quarry, you've got other, uh, big employers that are right there, and this would provide housing for people that are working at those, uh, employers. Is it in the public interest? Yes, this is in the public interest, again, because of the, um, housing need in New Bern and the area. Are there changed conditions that, that warrant this? Uh, yes, you know, the market right now is tough to develop in, uh, and so in order to make projects, uh, developable, you know, it, it does help to, to be able to make the most benefit of your property. And so that's, again, why they're, uh, looking at this change. But I really want to focus on the second part of this, and that's the plan consistency part, and I want to, uh, point out some things. In the 2022 land update, Land Use Plan Update, uh, you all have identified the North Carolina 43 focus area, and this property is within that focus area. In that document, which was just, again, prepared last year, uh, and is dated 2022, uh, it says that this area, the population is increasing steadily. That's a quote from your, from your land use plan. Uh, Section 2.3 says there is very modest amount of multifamily housing in, in the entire, entire area, not just in, in the 43, uh, area, but also in all of New Bern. The location is convenient to those five different, uh, uh, major manufacturers and, uh, employers. Section 3.5 talks about the suitability of the development area, uh, for this. And again, there's a table that re, relates specifically to the North Carolina 43 focus area, uh, which you all are, are looking at. And the positive criteria that are listed there are, large employers are, are located in that area, there's developable land, which this is part of, and then there's availability of utility services. Policy 3.71, which talks about land and use development. Uh, under that, there are several policy statements that, that clearly support this request. One is to promote diversity in housing stock in, by encouraging a variety of options. Well, we've got a lot of single-family residential homes in New Bern, what we don't have is a lot of multifamily housing. Uh, the policy 1.2 is increasing the supply in the housing market, uh, which keeps the costs, uh, at a manageable level for renters, as well as encourages migration to New Bern. Again, that's in your land use plan. Um, the 1.3 talks about amending reg, regulations with focus on greater accommodation of a variety of housing types, such as multifamily. The site design, dying, and buffering issues are all taken care of during subsequent, uh, hearing procedures and things like that. So again, traffic, buffering, all of those kind of things are looked at in great detail, not only by the planning staff and all of the agencies in, uh, New Bern. Fire Department will be talked to, Police Department will be talked to, North Carolina Department of Transportation will be talked to. We're not looking into commercial uses for this area, uh, but that is available right now as part of the PUD that has been approved for this. Uh, but they, you know, the, uh, owner believes that, uh, providing multifamily housing would be a better, a better use. And then, uh, 1.21 says encourage development approaches like PUDs, and that's what this is. This has already been approved as PUD. Uh, we're just trying to, uh, modify what the, uh, existing use of the PUD is to something that's a little slightly different. Figure 16 in the, uh, in the land use plan shows the land use as vacant commercial, but this is in urban transition area. And what the definition of urban transition is, is this classification provides for future intensive urban development. Now, I, I didn't put the word intensive in there, that's in your all's land use plan. Second one is that these areas include most of the western portion of New Bern's ETJ, which is where this is. So, again, there are criteria that you all are supposed to consider about reasonableness, and I believe that through the staff's plan, through, through their presentation, through the presentation of the owners and things, you've been given information to show that this request is reasonable. The other part that you're supposed to, uh, to focus on is whether it's consistent with your land use plans, and clearly it is, based on these statements that, that have been pulled right from your, from your land use plan. Plus, your planning staff, who you all pay to do this, this type of work, has found that it's consistent with the, with the plans. So we would ask that you all approve this request tonight, um, and, you know, again, let this move forward through the process, um, and, and basically approve the, the change from R10A to R8. I would like, we're happy to answer any kind of questions, and the board has, uh, and if I can't answer them, then, then, it's with me, Will. Uh, we also are, um, we would like an opportunity, if, if other people are given a chance to comment, to, to respond to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think this is your third and final time.
Thank you. I'm confused. The second person was up here, and the third person was up here, didn't say the same thing. I mean, in my eyes, they contradict themselves. And the gentleman just left. I'm asking myself, do you really know what you want to build? I'm confused.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sandra Jones. I've retired from the military of 21 years. I'm glad you gave me this opportunity to, to speak and share my concerns. I live at 401 Ginger Drive, um, over in Tyler Lake, and coming out of that development is very very, very dangerous. I cannot stress enough about how unsafe it is. I don't think anyone has a problem here with the additional apartments being built, but I know there are areas labeled for commercial and those that are labeled for residence. But why clutter an area that's already clustered? Coming out of there is so dangerous that I almost got killed a couple of weeks ago. I was coming out of the housing development. I went to the middle lane to wait for the far-right lane to clear. There must have been a blind spot, I think there's a little blind spot. People are so impatient, rushing, trying to be somewhere on time. They cut over in my turning lane, and I'm watching that lane, I'm watching my rearview mirror. This truck is coming head-on doing at least 50 miles an hour. All I could do was speed up a little bit in the little space that I had. He actually dodged me by getting in the oncoming traffic lane, thank God there was nothing coming, and swing around me. It is just very dangerous. You have the individual homes on the street of 43, you've got the trailer park across from you, you've got people and children crossing the street, you've got people coming from the gas station from the left, you've got people coming out of Gracie Farms, trying to make a left and a right, and you've got people coming out of the other gas station down the road. It is just too congested there. And I see a lot of other open areas that maybe we should reconsider if you're not going to widen the roads or if you're not going to put lights at the intersections there of Gracie Farms and at coming out of Tyler Lake area. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
20 seconds, I know it's my second time. I just wanted to say my biggest takeaway tonight, I just want to thank, I think it was Mr. Thomas over here, sorry I couldn't hear your name from back there, is that I want to thank him for his exhaustiest list of rezonings that have gotten approved regardless of what the community had to say. So it makes me wonder at what point in time is a monico amount of tax dollars not going to mean more than what the community has to say that's being impacted by it?
Hi, my name is Sharon Chu. I live at 522 Dakota. Most of the things have been covered by others of my neighbors, but I do want to enforce again the fact that there's been no transparency from developers for at least two years. When we bought our house, it was to be a certain thing out front, then suddenly that's off of the St. Burke website. St. Burke, Stars and Stripes, they're the same. They share the same address in Atlanta in an office. So anyway, this is what I have emailed the developer several times, which I was advised to do, and I never get an answer. They don't bother to even have respect to answer. So I really don't trust anything that I'm hearing here tonight. Other than the fact that you all did clarify with the lady that stood up and spoke about the zoning, that I think we all can understand that somewhat better, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be my last time, second time. John Adams, again, Mayor, Board, thank you again for your time. We heard a plethora of information. We heard a speaker that opened everything up, that gave us the understanding of what this zone was about, why they're asking to rezone, the importance of it, the background of the differences of what was already set in case by this board and by the zoning committee that is paid for by the North Carolina, who had set a plan in motion for the development process of the 43-55 area, and for them to then ask for an additional 45 or so units, which seems so little and so few far between. The problem that we all have in the community is how that's going to adjust into our community. It is obvious now, not from the first speaker, but by Mr. Johnson from the representative of Stars and Stripes, that he is or they will continue with the apartment complex. And that is now something that we all understand in this room. We were not sure what they wanted to do or anything. Again, many people in our community have reached out, but they are under no obligation to respond to our emails, which is completely within their rights. However, it is our properties that we invested in, why we love our area so much, why we absolutely enjoy New Bern and the processes that are there. As a person that has kids that go to school in the area, it's not the greatest schools, and there's improvement that is going on, because that new principle is great. It truly is getting better. But if we're not focused on infrastructure before we deal with rezoning thought processes for development, then what are we really setting New Bern up for? And I leave you with that thought process, and I truly think that you are very capable. We are in capable hands. The laundry list against us, everyone that doesn't want this to happen, it sounds, as the engineering professional brought it up, that we're definitely stacked, all the cards are stacked against us. But I believe that we put down a pretty hefty line. I know a lot of this is probably going to go to the next step. I hope it does not. I still oppose. I think the majority of the people that live in our neighborhood do. I hope they get up here and say that they oppose, because those votes do count and they are taking that consideration. So with that, I truly hope that you make a very good decision. Mayor, Board, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, other officials, and to my wonderful neighbors. My name is Rose Marie Capel. I live at 309 Frida Road. I've been there for a little over a year, and I must say that I enjoy the community, but I recognize that Lake Tyler still has problems, infrastructure problems. So I would not want to see more development close by when those infrastructure problems have not been taken care of. I oppose building there completely, because it will change the atmosphere of our community. Now, a lot has been said about the 43 area, and I drive from 43 at 55 to Route 70, and there's a lot of land, undeveloped land there. I don't know how it's zoned, but I do know that there's a four-lane highway there, as opposed to the two-lane highway with one turn lane on Washington Post. And I also recognize that Stars and Stripes owns that property, and they would like to make money on it, and I can appreciate that. But perhaps something could be done where the city and Stars and Stripes could work together, and some land that's on 43 between 55 and Route 70 could be made available to Stars and Stripes where they could build some properties, where they could build more than the 177 or the 214 that they want to build to provide more housing for people in the area. So I've only been here a year. I don't know what the zoning is like in that area, but I know there's a lot of undeveloped land there. And one would not have all of the major traffic problems if building was done on that section of 43. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I know it's my second time, but one quick thing, well, two. One, I want you to, you guys know that I oppose, which I think you do, but I wanted to add something to my comment when I was talking about our neighborhood, and we still had many lots available. Our many lots that are available are also keeping us from having our neighborhood turned over to us as residents, so we don't have control of our HOA. Our HOA is still being controlled by Stars and Stripes, and they have their management company running it, which is fine. Management company is doing fine, but it's not by us, our neighborhood, us as a resident. We pay our dues. One of the things that is concerning to us with them building, which we've now found is more going to be apartments on a property that somewhat is being maintained landscaping-wise by our HOA dues, is how much is that going to encroach on our amenities? They haven't said anything because they're not being transparent with us. But also, again, think about the fact that they've got one project going, can't finish it because canceled lots, and finish those other 99 houses, and they want to start another one and ruin the view going into our neighborhood. Have you guys been by there, looked in to that neighborhood, driven in? Beautiful view. You come in, what's that front lot going to look like? Big apartment building going down where there's wooded trees? Big apartment building? Yeah, I mean, that takes away from what we bought. If you guys bought a house from there, how would you guys kind of feel? You spent $350,000 for a house. Don't be like Florida where I came from, where they just changed all the zoning, built houses, Pope County. They're the fastest-growing county in the country. They issued over 15,000 housing permits in a year. They don't have the infrastructure to keep up with it. Roads, water, electricity, schools. Don't be like that. Be New Bern. Think about what you guys are doing. Be what you guys are supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
To my point two, just listening to the developer side here, you had one gentleman who's saying, well, it's 50,000 feet, we're just, this is just rezoning. You had another gentleman who said that, well, this is going to be mixed use, and then you had a third gentleman say, well, there's going to be no commercial, but they don't know what they're going to build there. So what is the full story? I feel like we're not getting that. And I just don't see a harm in knowing what actually they're going to build before the zoning change. What harm would that cause to know exactly what they're going to build? It seems like there's plans, but we're just not getting them, and I don't know if you've been privy to them, and we're not, and you know that and we don't, but that's what it seems like now. There's three different stories, and we don't know what it's going to be. Is it going to be a 10-foot or a 10-story apartment building that we're going to have to look at? Like, we're not getting anything on there. We want to know what is going to be built there and how it's going to affect, you know, our community next to that. Thank you.
I was answering, just kind of trying to bite my tongue just a little bit, but I had to come back second time, yes, we had, let me say this. Picture this, you've got a driveway here for Lake Tyler, you've got a driveway here for Colonial, you've got a driveway here for Planters Ridge, and then you've got Gracie Farms, right? So I know the gentleman said that they do all these studies with the roads, but okay, Colonial's been there since like the 90s, because I remember moving to 42 when I started driving, I was in first grade. Planters Ridge was already going. Gracie Farms was back there when I was going to James L. Smith back in elementary school. So how good was that study? How good is the next study really going to be? That's just, that's my question, especially given that traffic has gotten worse and there really was not anything to alleviate all that and all this development. That's just in the back of my mind. And then this second piece, he said it's not affordable, it's attainable, and I hear they already approved for a certain amount of apartments. So I'm kind of struggling with the idea that we're going to disrupt for something that the majority of the people might not be able to afford, because attainable is subjective, while affordable is actually defined within policies and development.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if there's no others that want to come forward, I'd like to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Discussion to close the public hearing?
Yes. Oh, no.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any public hearing is now closed. All remain best.
I just want to thank each and every one of the citizens that come out here, that you're present here tonight. I want you to know that I received your emails, your phone calls, and your texts, and I took it under advisement. I am not going to waste a lot of time on this issue, this rezoning, because I've heard a lot from Lake Tyler, but I just want to say this much. This rezoning is not just going to affect Lake Tyler, as we've all heard here tonight. You have Gracie Farms, you have Planters Ridge, you have the residents that live on 43 and Washington Post Road, you have Briarwood Lane, you have Gracie Farms. You have all of those areas that's going to be affected by this rezoning. Now, as I said, I'm not going to waste a lot of time on this, because as a homeowner myself, I would not want a multifamily 200 apartment complex in front of my home or in front of my community. So, and we all have heard from you, we've heard your cry, we've heard your concerns, and we've heard, you know, all of you were in opposition of this rezoning, and you have just cause. Because I, myself, went to the area, and I was really, when I went to the area, I did the whole circle. I went to Gracie Farms, I went 43, I went Lake Tyler, I went to Briarwood Lane, and I was amazed at the number of homes that's already in that area. So to bring 200 more homes, and as we discussed here tonight, with that 200 homes, you know there's going to be a great influx of people. With that comes more traffic, more traffic to an area that's already congested. And I'm aware of the accidents that's happened on 43, and I have to take into consideration that, and I'm quite sure this board, every one of us up here are homeowners, and I don't think one of us up here would want to see a 200 apartment complex come in front of our homes or within our community, come in front of our community. I just don't want this area to become inundated with more apartment buildings, because we all are aware that when we have an influx of people, there is going to bring more noise, traffic, and let's just be real about it, violence, crimes, just like it is all over this city. I'm not just pinpointing this area, but all over this city. We experience this all over this city. So I'm just going to say this, and I hope my fellow board members agree with me. You've heard what our citizens are requesting of us, that these are my constituents, they're your constituents as well. We serve this whole city, and if my constituents wants, is in opposition of this rezoning, I have to go along with them, and I'm going to, I'm going to tell you right now before I cast my vote, I'm going to vote no on this rezoning. I just want to make one more comment, because I don't want it to, we have four senior board members here, the mayor, Alderman Astor, Alderman Kinsey, and myself, and they are all aware that we have asked the state, NCDOT, because I brought it forth to this board, to put a traffic light at the entrance of Lake Tyler, but to no avail. But to no avail. So it's not like that we have overlooked that. No, we haven't. And however this rezoning goes tonight, this is gonna be something that I know that we as a board, all board members, we're gonna attack that situation again, because I know what it's like to go here, to come out of Lake Tyler, because I've been over there numerous times, and I've said it to this board numerous times. Going, coming out of that Lake Tyler, and I can imagine the subdivisions across the, uh, um, the two, we have two community home, um, parks there in the area as well, as Planters Ridge. So it's really congested, and like I said, that, that's about all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna vote, I, I got my constituents, you don't want this rezoning, so I'm gonna vote no. That's it.
Alderman Kinsey.
The counsel tonight has presented his case very well, very impressed. All the dots and i's, the dots, the t's have been crossed. Everything has been done. But the communication breakdown for the people that is not looking forward for the encounter of all the traffic, no one has communicated that part. We talked about everything, but that's something that has been left out with the residents. They don't know what's gonna happen and how to approach that. Uh, they feel that they've been left out in the dark. And I haven't heard no one mention it. You mentioned in so many different words that this study's gonna go on, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. But no one has communicated with them to let them know what's gonna happen with all that influx that's coming in. I think that's something that they need to know. And, uh, when do you think that, that will come about? Do you have any idea? Anyone could answer that, that'd be fine. Could you come to the speaker, could you come to the mic, please?
Uh, yes, thank you for your question, Alderman Kinsey. That, that, all of that information comes up during the subsequent processes. This is really just looking at whether this area should be rezoned from the one district to the ne, next district. And in that process of the special use hearing, there will be a technical review committee that looks at, uh, specific projects for whatever use is used. But this process, when you rezone something, it can be used for any of the purposes that's in there. Yes, I, I think I'm okay in saying that the intent is to put multifamily in there. And that's why, one of the reasons they're asking for this. The next step in the process would be to ask for the map to be amended to remove the commercial areas that are designated on the, on the PUD map. And then the third step would be to go to the special use, uh, process. And that will be looked at heavily, and it is a quasi-judicial proceeding process, where the public has the right to come in and, assuming they have standing, can make statements about what they feel is appropriate. And the Board of Adjustment can actually, you know, put conditions on the, on the project if they want to. So, uh, there are, that all will be addressed in great detail as the process moves forward. But here, the question is, is this a reasonable request, uh, to basically rezonate? To allow for a little bit higher density? It's not changing the residential nature of it, still residential. And it's not changing really any of the, uh, uses in it, because multifamily is allowed in R-ten A, same as it would be in R-A. So again, that, that, I hope that answers your question. If it doesn't...
So the influx doesn't matter if it was actually three thousand people that live in that community there? So if, the influx wouldn't, that's not under consideration. I think that's the situation with, with the residents, that the influx that's coming in. I, I, from what I'm hearing from the, the residents, it's the influx, more so than anything else. If, uh, I, I'm hearing that when they're trying to go home or leave home, it's very difficult. It's cars already now parking on the street. So with the influx coming in, it's gonna increase more. I think that's what I'm hearing from, from the residents. So that's what I'm having a problem with myself, trying to understand the influx. You know, this guy said he has experience going in, doing this and doing that, but no one never talked about the influx of, of, of the growth.
That, that is gonna occur in any type of development, and especially in a pre-approved PUD that you have where it's, I mean, this, again, this area has been established as a PUD since before two thousand and eight. And it's had this front area designated for uses, which includes multifamily use. It's just not all of the area that's multifamily. There's commercial in there too, which would allow for convenience stores and things like that. So there is gonna be an influx, no matter, no matter what, uh, because the owner has the right to develop this. But where that is looked at, the influx, Alderman Kinsey, again, the North Carolina DOT has to be consulted about any kind of specific plans. And if they feel like the use, based on the traffic counts and things like that, that, that come up during that, that there needs to be a traffic light, that there needs to be turning lanes and things like that, they can require that, uh, when the, uh, the owner goes to get, uh, site plan approvals and things like that. So that is part of the process. It's just not at this stage.
I hear you loud and clear, like on Elizabeth Avenue in my district, um, all the way back to West New Bern. They have cars, when you actually go down Elizabeth Avenue coming off of Glenburnie Road, once you go over Race Track Road, you actually have to wait to pass a car, because there's so many cars on the side of the street. I'm only speaking from experience, not what I heard, what I see every day. My phone rings off the hook, they have ducks going across the highway all the time. It is, it's just a, a situation that I encounter every day, and that's the reason why I have the questions that I have. Uh, like I said, you did everything correctly, you paid, the rules are, is there in place. But it's the influx that is the problem. That's all that I'm trying to get upon, across there. And, 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 and that's their concern. And I like to know that I haven't heard it addressed tonight, that's all, from, from my hearing, you know? Uh, I, uh, like you say, you said early on that it would be addressed, but it wasn't addressed early on to the residents to have a understanding, uh, based on the influx. That's just my take. And I appreciate your time.
Alderman Astor.
Alderman Kinsey, there is, there was a, a traffic impact analysis done at the time that this development came up. And it, it addressed all the traffic issues at that time, and looking at the potential for this particular tract to be developed. And I'm pretty sure that, um, and it was done by a company called Ramion Kent, which is a pretty prominent, uh, traffic company in North Carolina. And I'm sure as we go through this process, whether we stay TNA or we go to R-A, either way, they're gonna probably request that, that TIA, as you call it, be updated to the current traffic situation.
But the, the, the residents didn't seem to, uh, have any, uh, 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 knowledge of that tonight, if I'm not mistaken. They, they, I mean, I'm, I'm only speaking what I heard, you know? They say I need a hearing there sometime, but I'll try to hear the best I can. But they say they had no knowledge of it, but you said it has been recorded.
Right.
So is it, is, is it that, can you get them a copy of that to let them see?
I'm not sure what we would communicate to them at this time.
Influx, sir, influx. Influx, and you said that, um, you said that, and the study has been done. I think that's what you said.
Well, that, that was at the time that the development was done, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
Oh, okay, so that's an old one. So probably, they weren't even there around. They probably weren't even living there then.
Right, but when we, when that study was done, what you see on what's called the PUD or the General Plan included multifamily and commercial out on forty-three. Now, some of those numbers are probably gonna change, and that TIA will have to be updated. But, uh, right now, we, we don't even have a plan in place for this development that we're talking about during the zoning change, so we don't know what to share with anybody at this time, okay?
Alderman Astor, I, I just remind the audience, please keep your comments down as we're trying to hear clearly.
Alderman Kinsey, I, I would just, uh, add to what Mr. Thomas said, and that is, that at this stage, again, there is no site-specific plan here. And, and once a site-specific plan is developed, then you will not, I, the maximum density is what you're talking about, where you have potentially going from a hundred and, uh, I think it was ninety to a hundred, two hundred and twenty, uh, units. The two hundred and twenty is a maximum number. But when they get in there, there are some wetlands on this property. They're not gonna be able to use that for parking areas and things like that. That's gonna reduce the size, and it may reduce the, the, uh, the number of units that can be put on there. There's just not that kind of information that is required at this stage of the process. And that's, that's all we're trying to communicate to, to the board, is that during this process, uh, you all are just required to consider whether it is reasonable for those five criteria and whether it's consistent with your land use plans. There was a lot of time and effort put into those land use plans. And, and this area is designated as urban transition, which allows for intense development. So, and we're trying not to, you know, again, we didn't come in and ask for a commercial C-three-type designation, which allows commercial land, residential, we didn't ask for R-six or anything like that, which allow, you know, more density. We just asked for the minimal amount, just to make it so that they can put together a good, nice project for the area. So I hope that, that addresses your question.
Thank you so kindly.
Alderman Astor.
Well, you know what? My question might be directed to him anyway, so if he would like to come up, he, he'd... I, I have a question. The only thing that, that our statement, the only thing that we're really talking about tonight is increasing the, uh, number of apartments from two hundred and seven, over a hundred and ninety?
One seventy-seven.
Excuse me, one, one seventy-seven to what?
Two twenty-two, maximum both cases.
So we're talking about, the only thing that we're considering tonight is giving them forty more apartments. Okay? No matter what we do tonight, you're gonna tear these woods down and build at least a hundred and seventy-seven apartments, correct?
That, that's the, let, let me, let me step in just a minute. That is the maximum if every square inch of that acreage was developed. That's the maximum that could be there. And it's not reasonable to think that, because there's gonna be parking, there's gonna be roads, there's gonna be other amenities, there's wetlands that can't be disturbed. So this whole figure that keeps getting bounced around, I appreciate the fact that staff put it in there, and I understand the spirit of it. But you're telling them that if every bit of that land was developed, and now what happens in these situations where emotions are high, people are latching on to a two-hundred-figure number, and now we're extrapolating that with the number of cars that's gonna be there, that's not the reality. The issue here is, and I'm sorry to take it forward for just a minute. The issue here is, in infill development, there's a process that you follow. This is the first step of the process. Do I like the process? No. I think the process needs to be different, but I don't establish that process. I believe that there's some more personally that could be shared by the developer, because if you're asking for the request, you already have some sort of idea of what you can do now, based off of the current zoning, and you evidently understand that you don't have enough there to develop to make your numbers crunch. So that's why you're asking for rezoning. Is that a fair assessment? Okay? So, so my point, now, I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed, sorry. My point is, is if more communication would have happened before we get to this point, you may not have a courtroom full of angry residents, because the reality is, there's a lot of things that you can do right now with the current zoning. And I think what I would like for staff to do is maybe come back and refresh the board on what they could do right now. So if this zoning, let's say it, it doesn't pass tonight, what could the developer do and the owner of the property do tomorrow to start the process, to do whatever they want? We keep hearing that there's commercial lined out in the PUD. Can they put commercial on the current zoning, or would that require rezoning? Because it's been in the PUD, they don't have to do that.
Um, thank you. And I added those numbers because I, I figured I'd be asked for them, and I'm sorry if that confused everyone with their high emotions. The intent was to clarify, uh, we were here to talk about a density increase. Um, yes, there, the PUD is valid, that, that planned unit development is valid. If they want to come in and submit plans, uh, our next submittal day for development review, that say multifamily in the area that is labeled multifamily, and that says commercial in the label area, commercial, we would take them and we would start processing them, depending on what it was. Would, um, the apartments would still need a special use permit, so that review would lead them to the Board of Adjustment for that quasi-judicial hearing. The commercial likely wouldn't. Uh, right now, if, as, if you were zoned, let's say it wasn't a PUD, and then the zoning just stayed the same, they could come in and submit for development review. That maximum density, of course, that's gonna go down, because we need parking, we have wetlands, we have roads, we have amenities and things that go in there. That was a very, very, very raw number. It's very high after you add all those things in, which surprises some people, which is probably why during the evaluation process, our applicants, that once we get all this in, we'd like to have a little more, and they ask for that request for something that is literally the same zoning district with a different density calculation.
And, and all, all of the concerns that were expressed tonight would all have to be addressed if the zoning didn't change, if they decided to start developing tomorrow, correct?
Absolutely.
The, the traffic, the buffer zones, um, the schools, we have no purview over that. I, I appreciate the concern, but we don't control whether or not we expand zoning based off school. We expand the zoning, if there's more people that come here, that's a county function that they have to account for. Um, and, and the traffic. And I just want to be clear, because the, the zoning process gets very out of whack at times, to, to use, um, some frank terms, because we start talking about all these other concerns, which they're all valid, every single one of them is a valid concern. But tonight, when we go through this process, we're not being asked, is this rezoning going to make traffic worse? Is it going to increase noise? We're asked, is this zoning consistent with our land use plan? It's more of a technical-type hearing than a political hearing. But I certainly understand that politics come into play with it. That's the reason it's before this board to make a decision, and that the unanimous decision by Planning and Zoning Board doesn't actually make that authority. We do. And I understand that that's done to bring in the politics with it, so I appreciate that fact. But there's a lot of things that's been said tonight that could certainly happen tomorrow if these folks don't get their rezoning, they decide, we're gonna have to work with the current zoning. We'll see you in your office tomorrow, get ready, because we're gonna build the most number of apartments that we can build, or whatever other, uh, is allowed by the PUD that they've already had in place.
Could I finish you up, review?
Hey. Um, I, I just have another question to you, is what's the speed limit on that road? Is it forty-five?
It, it, it is, it is right in a transition area from fifty-five County, and it turns to forty-five about where the city line is, on forty-three.
Okay. And it's all, it's all state road? All state roads?
So you said county line, so that's each road?
Excuse me, this man. Why can't we petition the state to lower the speed limit on that road where it passes these developments to try to help with the speeding, uh, out there and possibly help with, you know, some of the car accidents where people pulling out in front of people that are going too fast? You know, and maybe we should look, be lowering it to thirty-five during, through that area?
We just had, we just had a, a speed limit change to fifty.
Yeah, but that was on fifty-five, right?
No, 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 on forty-three, to fifty. It was changed to fifty. I wanted it lowered to forty-five, but the state would not lower to forty-five. They, they set it at fifty.
Alderman Frill?
I just, I drove my...
Okay, Alderman Frill?
Jessica, if, if you can, um, just based on your knowledge, and this question, you know, is, is open to Mr. Lofflin, if you would like to, um, add anything to this, or the gentleman who spoke on behalf of Stars and Stripes. Just in your experience, when you're dealing with developments, what percentage of the developed property ends up being roadways, parking, open space, wetlands? And I realize there are a lot of factors there. I'm not looking for exact, I mean, is it twenty percent? I'm not looking for exact, I mean, is it 20% generally? Is it 30%, 40%?
I have seen, depending on what kind of amenities are required and what kind of buffers are required, because every jurisdiction has their own requirements. Plus, we've got those wetlands, which we don't have a current delineation of showing us what that is. So, that always makes an impact in this area of the state. I'd say you can develop between 50 and 70% of it.
Say that again?
Between 50 and 70% of it.
Is what can be developed, or that's the amount of space used up by?
It's going to be different every time, and I feel a little bit on the spot answering that, not being completely familiar with different properties. We may be saying this, that they're not all going to be the same.
Okay. No, and that's fine. I understand it's a tough question to try to answer. The gentleman with the beard, you've got a lot of experience. You acknowledge, you have a lot of experience around the country.
Yes, 60 or 70%, sir. I'll build the, so 30% to 40%, set aside for setbacks or barriers, like she said, environmental stuff, wetlands, things like that.
Okay, thank you. So, 30 to 40% of the 20 acres is not going to be built out with apartment complex, with apartment buildings. And this goes back to what the mayor was talking about, is that the numbers that are being quoted here tonight, you can't use those numbers. Decrease those numbers by 30 to 40%. So, the high number of 222 units is, well, let's see, 22, 44, 66, 88. So, decrease that number by 66 to 88 units. Now, you're talking about what will probably end up being built there if they get approval for an R8 zone.
Excuse me. The board's just deliberating.
I mean, is that accurate? Or am I misstating?
I would say that's probably about accurate.
Okay. So, all I'm suggesting to you is, don't get locked in on the numbers, because the numbers are not what the reality is. So, it could go anywhere from maybe 100 units to somewhere 150, 160 units, not 177 to 222. That was the point I wanted to try to make. Question really for the developer or any of the representatives. You came into the picture, if I understood it, around 2008. Is that accurate?
The PUD was approved prior to the current owner. They came into possession of the property in 2016.
Oh, so Stars and Stripes?
Correct.
Only purchased the property in 2018?
16, 16, 2016.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, my question is, if anybody can answer it, why now versus 2016, in terms of making this request?
Another great question.
Well, I think they had some things that they needed to address with the subdivision first, because when they came in and purchased it, the subdivision was not, there was not a lot of homes that were existing in the subdivision. So, they've been working on the subdivision part of it, and now they're working on the outer edge of it, which is that front area there. But I think that's the timing difference, is why they didn't come in and do the front area first. They wanted to get the housing area in the subdivision going and built out.
Okay. And that's a reasonable answer. Although, if you think about it, the request for a zone change, changing from R10A to R8, would be more palatable when you have fewer residents in the development. Probably would have been a much easier sell in 2016 than it is in 2023, when you have a lot more homes in the development, a lot more residents, who now have concerns about higher-density housing being built out adjacent to where their homes are. So, just curious. I mean, there's a couple of different kind of thoughts that go into that, and I was just curious as to why now versus then. A general question, and I don't know who can answer that. City attorney, maybe, city manager might be able to, staff, or even the developer. What are the thresholds that have to be met to get a traffic light on a highway like There have to be some very specific thresholds that have to be met in order for traffic control devices to be installed.
I've got a brief answer before you on that, okay? The traffic impact analysis that was done in 2008, or whatever that year was, is about that thick. And I don't recall exactly what's in it, because I haven't read it in a while, but I'm sure there was some language in there about the number of units that may trigger with DOT for somebody to put a traffic light in, okay? So, when we update this traffic impact analysis, I'm sure that's going to be addressed in that document. And typically, what's in those documents is what is enforced, okay? So...
Well, okay, but that doesn't answer the question. I'm asking for, there have to be some very specific thresholds that have to be met in order for a, you know, traffic control devices and road improvements to be implemented, to be required as part of a development. But we're not hearing what those are.
Well, I'm not a traffic person, so I can't address that, but the traffic engineers can, and NC DOT are the ones who have the expertise to make that determination. And it's not somebody just going out and looking and writing it down. They've got these traffic models, computer models and all that stuff, that they run to determine what they need there, if anything. And also, they have criteria that DOT establishes that they have to meet when they set these models up. When the traffic impact analysis is done in draft form, there's a meeting with DOT, within the review, and they're back and forth massaging that. Out of that report, I'm sure there'll become some language about traffic signals being there. If not, then I don't know what to do beyond that, unless the city can push it to give one there.
I appreciate it.
Can Attorney Davis, can you answer that question?
No, ma'am. It varies by project, as Mr. Thomas was saying. It's not as linear as reaching 4,000 trips per day triggers a signal. It's not linear. It's a function of a lot of different things, time of day, and that's why these experts have to come in, and they model the whole thing. And then DOT comes to the conclusion. But it is thousands of trips per day.
It has to be done by the state NC DOT?
Well, a specialist in traffic studies will be hired.
Through the state?
No, ma'am. The developer pays for that. And then it goes to the state for review, and DOT makes the decision.
Thank you.
And a question for our attorney, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but let me ask it anyway. In the decision that we are being, or that's put before us this evening, we are not allowed to impose any kind of conditions on that at all?
No, sir. Good question. Although, as I always advise you, and it's been stated here a number of times, I'm going to try to say it clearly and simply. When you are considering a rezoning, everyone wants to know, what's the project? What are you going to do if we rezone that? It's a logical, fair question. What I've always come back with is to assume the most burdensome use allowed in the zone. If a person comes before you in a commercial district proposing to build a florist, that's all great. We love flowers, we like florists. But a convenience store may also be a use on that exact spot when you rezone it. So, your obligation is to consider the most burdensome use, and ask yourselves, is that reasonable? So, that's why the discussion tonight has been on multifamily. That is the most burdensome use that can be built in an R8 zone.
Thank you. If the developer were to offer, commit to making certain improvements, can they do that in this setting?
No, sir. This is purely, we're really up there at 50,000 feet. We're just big picture. Is the rezoning consistent? Is it reasonable and consistent with city plans? All the other metrics follow thereafter. But at no point, just to get ahead of what you might be thinking, there's no version, because we don't have conditional zones. There's no version, we're going to sign a contract with the developer and lay out exactly, precisely what can be done. We have a land use ordinance, and all projects must comply with the land use ordinance. With respect to multifamily, we have an additional check and balance, and that is the special use permit, where the developer has the burden of presenting facts and experts to satisfy the health and safety issues, the traffic issues, all the things that we're hearing about. And the public and others have an opportunity to challenge those experts and ask all the questions. And if at the end, the Board of Adjustment determines that conditions need to be imposed to satisfy reasonable objections that have been raised, then they have the authority to impose conditions. Not conditions that you can't build an apartment complex, or not that you must limit it to three apartments, but reasonable conditions that typically deal with traffic, screening, noise, and light.
Alderman Roy. Are you?
Well, just one other follow-up question. Our planning commission voted, I think it was unanimously, that the request being made by the applicant was reasonable, and what's the other word? I'm forgetting.
Consistent with city plans. Consistent with all the city plans.
It was reasonable.
Yes, sir.
A majority of this board might decide otherwise.
Sure.
And say that, no, it's not a reasonable request.
Correct.
Is there any recourse for the developer at that point?
Very, very hard to overcome your decision. You have no legal, I'm saying it in reverse, you have no legal obligation to change a zone.
Okay.
All right. Alderman Roy.
To the residents, thank you so much for coming out tonight and expressing yourselves. I continue to say that every voice has value. Mr. Johnson, I believe if I have your name correctly, made mention that the board should focus on the land use, that that should be our focus. He talked about the time that has gone into compiling this ordinance for land use, and he also said that there's been a lot of investment. What he failed to say was to talk about your investment, what you have invested in a lifetime. Some of you talked about migrating to this area, some of us were born here, some of us have been here a lifetime, whatever the case might be. But our focus tonight should be on residents. They are the ones that we should have our concern with. Yes, we have a land use ordinance. Yes, we respect that. But we also need to respect the voice of the residents. I concur with every one of you. I would not want an apartment complex in front of my $350,000, $350,000 home. No one would want that. No one on this board would want that, as Alderman Best so well pointed out. So, again, to be very, very brief, I certainly encourage you that no matter what the outcome of this board decision might be tonight, follow the process. Don't be weary in your well-doing. You stick to it. You follow it wherever it leads you. You speak your voice. Your voice has value. It is your community, your investment, your lifetime. You make sure that your voice has value. I would like to say also, I oppose the rezoning.
I'll just make a comment to highlight a couple of things that Ms. Rue stated. I asked her, were the approved PUD? And I have that here in hard copy, if anybody wants to see it displayed. But everything that the Warden Smith attorney stated, they actually have the authority to do under the current zoning and the current PUD. Ms. Rue confirmed that there are two multifamily developments already on the PUD. So, I do want to be clear, so that our constituents are not misinformed, that they could already, under current zoning, ask for a special use permit for apartments. So, it's, the decision tonight is not whether or not to have an apartment, that they already have the authority to make that request of the Board of Adjustment under a special use permit. So, I just don't want our constituents to be misinformed. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a quick question. Scott, our only obligation, or our only duty tonight, is to vote on whether or not this proposed ordinance is or is not consistent with our planning, or something.
Well, as part of your rezoning, you will find, you will, as part of your motion to approve or deny the zoning, you will find that it is consistent or inconsistent with your city plans.
So, Mayor, if there's no other comments, questions?
I just, one comment I want to make. When we're looking at this area, it's R10A from corner to corner currently. If you look at all the adjacent zoning that touches that by way of a street that dissects it, it's A5, it's R20, and it's R6, and it's almost C3, it looks like. So, just keep that in mind when we're looking at the technical aspect, not the political aspect, the technical aspect of whether or not this fits in with our land use ordinance. Just wanted to point that out, so. Go ahead, ma'am.
I understand what we're speaking on tonight about this rezoning, but I'd like to make a motion to not adopt an ordinance to rezone properties on Washington Falls Road, identified as tax parcel 8223003 and 8223004, from R10A to R8. Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the zoning request.
And just to be clear, Mayor, and as part of that, you're finding that it's inconsistent with city plans.
And it's, well, it's inconsistent with city plans.
Are you okay with that amendment?
I am.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Roy.
Alderman Roy. To not adopt.
Not rezoning.
Yes to deny.
Yes to deny. Yes, thank you. Alderman Astor.
No.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes to deny.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Alderman Pril.
No.
Mayor Odom.
No. Motion carries. It's 4-3, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the motion was denied.
Mayor, can we have a break?
Go right ahead.
Board, I would like to take a recess for maybe 10 minutes.
Have a motion, take a recess for 10 minutes?
So, move.
Have a second. Alderman Roy. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We're in recess. Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We are going to proceed. We are now on item number 11, which is thankfully, another rezoning. It is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to rezone 3208 Oaks Road, which is tax parcel ID 8031A032, and Ms. Rue is back. And Ms. Rue is back.
Thank you so much. Without introduction, again, this is a request to go from R ten to C four. Our applicant here is Jason Sanderson on behalf of the North Carolina Conference of Pentecostal Holiness Church. As the owner, this is one parcel. It's slightly under an acre on the north side of Oaks Road near its intersection with First Avenue. It is currently developed and being used or was being used as a church or a place of assembly. Utility services available to the property and it is served by the Elizabeth Avenue Fire Station. Notable property features in this case, there's no Blue Line streams. The property is currently developed, although it is in a flood zone. Those are from the state firm maps. The city of New Bern does not create flood maps, just for everyone's knowledge. And so if you were to renovate a, a structure that exists in a flood zone already, you would, beyond fifty percent of the assessed value, you would need to bring it up to all flood codes, which typically means that would need to be elevated, just sharing. This is our zoning map. You'll see here, although it is a small parcel, you look up at this map, it's like Ragout, everything's in there. There's all kinds of zoning districts. Many of them on this map far more intense than the C four that's being requested. The Planning and Zoning Board considered that when recommending this to you. In R ten, our minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet, primarily residential districts. And the C four is kind of our lower intensity neighborhood business district. Minimum lot size would be five thousand square feet. Principal use, again, up on the screen for you. Types of permitted uses in C four, as our attorney just recently stated, we need to consider all the uses that could possibly be used. Although it's a church and it was shared at the Planning and Zoning Board, what the intended change would be, these are all of the uses we need to consider on that parcel. Our twenty-ten land use plan classifies this as developed. That's not very in detailed description. Unfortunately, that is what the land use plan describes it as. And so it, there's really nothing that doesn't support the requested change. And our Planning and Zoning Board did evaluate the property. They felt it was consistent with the twenty-ten land use plan. This area of the city was not addressed in the twenty-twenty-two land use plan update. It was generally consistent with the character of adjacent land uses and zoning districts. Again, we saw that this area was full of all kinds of zoning districts. Any proposed changes of the property would require that site plan review process that we described earlier. We followed to go to another commercial use. And they did recommend that, it was unanimous, to recommend the proposed rezoning request. That is on the screen. Thank you. Oh, that concludes my staff report.
Sorry, I was waiting for the next slide.
I smiled at you, I thought we had that.
I was, sorry, I was looking down. Board, have questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Just, my understanding is this property's for sale?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So any, in North Carolina state law, anyone can request a change in the zoning classification to the body that makes that decision. It doesn't have to be an owner, it could be anyone.
Okay.
Another question. You said the intended use has been stated?
Yeah, so the applicant decided to share that with the Planning and Zoning Board. Again, there's two types of zoning. One is conditional zoning, where we can discuss a specific use of a property. Another is what we're discussing tonight, which is your traditional rezoning, where you need to consider all of the uses, which are summarized up on the screen. And if the applicant would like to share what he would intend to do, he is welcome to do so when the opportunity comes. Time to speak.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak for or against the project can come forward.
It's currently a church and my buyers bought it and wants to convert it zoning for a funeral home. He's a local funeral guy, good gentleman. He uses it mainly as a ministry. He says about sixty-five percent of the funerals now are cremations. So cremations will not be done at that facility. It'll be shipped off to Goldsboro for the cremation process, et cetera. So, you know, sometimes they'll have, you know, a few cars, small funerals, a little bit larger funerals, just like a church. Depends on what Sunday people come out and stuff like that. So it's pretty kind of the same usage, you know? He's going to do a light rehab on the church because it's dated. New carpet, add a bathroom, handicap bathroom. You fix the parking lot, newer windows, painting outside of the brick, just kind of bring up some updating of the church right now, so. Other than that, I mean, not much other difference than a church as far as probably traffic or anything like that. So, any questions y'all might have?
You're not required to since it's a public hearing, but if you want to share your name and...
Oh, my name is Jason Sanderson. I'm a local real estate agent. And I try not to lie, as the lady said. Should I get a real estate deal? But, yes, I'm just kind of presenting for him because he's a well-known local guy. He just kind of wants to stay on the down-low, so.
So the sale contingent upon...
Let's, until we get into the back and forth, let's continue with the public hearing because I'm sure there's probably some other folks that may have something to say.
Yes, it has to be rezoned in order to run it as a business. So it becomes from a tax exempt property to a tax paying property as well.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Next.
I'd like to speak in case.
First thing I want to say is, although if this were a conditional rezoning, which I believe is quite possible, okay? Because the truth is, and I sent you guys documentation, in the state of North Carolina, in cities our size and larger, seventy-eight percent of all rezonings are conditional. And I went through the entire city code and the word conditional zoning does not appear. So it's not actually illegal. Now, of course, it would be up to the attorney to tell you guys whether you should revise that to include that or not. But I'm telling you, throughout the state, that's the way it's done. The information I sent you, by the way, was through the, was done by the School of Government at Chapel Hill. And you should have got that. I know the city court distribution is on the court.
We received.
I submitted that under, because under the city court, I'm allowed to do that, to submit something to you guys. So, and I know Brenda did it because she told me to. So that's, that part, okay? In addition, don't forget, we had a fiasco with another property on Oaks Road, a very similar situation, a spot rezoning, okay? Where we went through it three times altogether, with reversals and back and forth and so on and so forth. And in the meantime, the buyer started making changes to the property before the thing was granted, as happens sometimes. He repaved the whole thing. I don't know if you guys ever bug down Oaks Road, but this is the one with the bars on the windows and it's been painted pink and is of no value as it sits right now. The entire parking lot is paved, okay? And somehow they got a permit for that. I don't know how, but they did. Before the, before the thing went through. It never did go through. So that's that, you know, so. So that's why conditional zoning makes a lot more sense. Now, as someone with some knowledge, speaking for themselves, we, it is done a lot on the Board of Adjustment in order to make things work for both sides without having a wide open thing where bad things can happen. Otherwise, we would have to turn down far more than we do. I apologize, I'm actually on the Board of Adjustment, but I'm speaking here tonight for myself, period, okay? And that's the last thing we're going to cover. But in the meantime, I also sent you guys documentation that spot rezoning on the North Carolina law requires a more intensive review than regular rezoning. And I don't see any of it, any evidence of it here at all because I played the meeting out on Channel Three. And the entire session on this was eleven minutes. And four of those minutes was taking permission from Sanderson, speaking on something that you're not allowed to consider and that the board is not allowed to consider. So really, only seven minutes were spent on this intensive review. And I don't see any evidence that this is done any other way than any other zoning. I don't see any information here. The other thing is, the fact that there's commercial properties in the area is kind of a false flag because, you know, administrator is new, she's been an excellent job of presenting things and so on and so. But the truth is, the only reason it's like that way is because there wasn't a rezoning in that area before the city annexed it. So there were commercial properties there because they couldn't be anywhere they wanted to be. They couldn't have been in my backyard. What's now my backyard? They could have built them anyway. And they did. So they're spread out. But I also, I got to disagree with the idea that any place there's a commercial business, you know, whether it's still running or not, within a half a mile, that justifies rezoning single-family homes in that area and spot rezoning nonetheless, again, you know? So I don't, I don't quite see that, you know? In other words, and even those, as I pointed out, and you guys know this, are only commercial because it was a pre-intensive commercial zone. Of course, of course, they were commercial before, before the, we had any zoning at all outside, you know, Craven County has no zoning, basically, thank you guys. So that's why it's like. But that's no, but once it was annexed, the people who have private homes there and so on and so forth. So is what you're saying tonight that any lot on that street can be rezoned commercial? That doesn't make sense to me, okay? That doesn't make sense and it's not fair because people, once you did annex the area, and it may have been a fourth amendment annexation, I don't know for sure, then they were entitled to the same tax protection as everybody else's, okay? And in my view, I don't see much evidence that we're getting the same protection for our tax dollars that other areas do. In all honesty, I don't see it. If you look around the area and so on and so forth. I mean, one of the safety factors with these types of things, and again, I have no problem with the use that, that the applicant is naked, none at all. You know, so we could use something like that in that area, you know? It doesn't, certainly wouldn't do any harm. But there's a whole range of other things. And I just want to ask here the presenter that the list you presented is not a complete list of what's on the table permissible uses, right? That's not every single item on it that's been on there because there are food items on there and so on and so forth, right? And also, in the table that lists uses, it actually says, this is only a summary. Even that is not complete. It says that. I'm telling you, you know, so. And again, you can do it right here, right now. If you can show me where it says conditional zoning anywhere in the zoning code, I'd be, I'd be surprised because I sat out there for a long time and tried to find it.
No, sir, as I said, we don't have conditional zoning in New Bern.
I know, yeah. No, you haven't been doing it, but that doesn't mean it's outlawed.
It is legal. It's illegal in New Bern, but it is legal.
Why is it illegal?
Because we don't have it in our land use code. But it is, it is authorized by statute.
You could add it, right?
Yes, sir, it is authorized by statute, but illegal in New Bern.
Okay, fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, fine. So, but, but also what I said is true is that even on normal rezoning, okay, we're in intensive review, seventy-eight percent of all rezonings in the state of North Carolina in cities over twenty-five thousand, okay, are conditional rezonings. So basically, we just haven't kept up. And we should have. You know what I'm saying? You would have a lot less things like you had tonight if you could have done a conditional rezoning. Maybe it could have been worked out, okay? That's my point. So, so the people in that area, you know, as far as, you know, and there's all these other uses possible. In fact, there's even food trucks allowed, isn't there? Under the table permissible uses?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I thought. All kinds of other things. Tennis courts, tennis marinas. If we get flooded again, we might have. So, I mean, that's most of what I wanted to say, you know, so. And the list is very plausible, it's a false flag, and that's about it in that sense, you know? In other words, some of you are familiar with where I live, for instance. There's, there's a lot next to me that technically is covered under the covenant that could not be developed, could not be developed for commercial purposes because we have a covenant there. But there's twenty acres in the back that's not covered by that. So theoretically, you could, you could, you know, break that up into, you know, ten parcels and put ten businesses in there. That's the truth. Because that's what you're saying here tonight, that any residential lot on Oaks Road, because anywhere on Oaks Road, there's, there's commercial property within, within a half mile. There's no place that isn't like that. So now you're saying that you can do it anywhere. And that's not right. Also, it wasn't covered on the screen, but it's in your package because I saw it, you know, before I came over. It's not just compliance with the, with the, with the land use code. It also has to be basically a good situation for the neighborhood. I don't want to summarize without a front of me, but that won't be, that the, won't be... What does it say there? It is there. Your statement, it's in there. They're allowed to do it as a single statement. It's there. Is it beyond the conditions? It says things beyond that. You see it or not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it right now.
No, okay. That's in the resolution? I thought I saw it. And that's also in the city code. It specifically says that, that those, that those items have to be met. And what happens is the city code actually says that as of now, that's supposed to be a separate finding. But the state law says that it can be covered. And that's the truth. All this stuff you can move.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duffy.
That's about it. Any questions for me? I just want to say, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. We weren't here, my neck, okay? As far as impacts of other possible, you know, more intensive use. Oh, another thing is that the basic, the one thing it permissible uses limits to is low-traffic uses. But with a special use permit, it's actually changed to high-traffic use. And as far as public safety goes, we don't even have sidewalks. We have people walking along Oaks Road at night, riding bicycles and stuff like that. And there's nowhere to hide to get out of the way of cars. So we don't want too much there. And that's why I fully support a conditional zoning. Tell you a truth, I'm not having to rent it, but there's enough room on those property park. So that was all my recommendations. Get it back on the tax laws. And that's my recommendation, is that you give this a little more time. We can include the thing tonight. The law says you don't have to make a decision tonight, right? I'm not getting any support here, but it does say that. That you can simply consider it for the next, and vote on it at any hearing in the future, at any meeting in the future.
Sure.
That's actually in the, in the, in the...
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Watson and I reside at one oh five North First Avenue. I also work in the real estate industry along with my friend Jason. And I believe we both have high ethics and moral standards. I am simply here because my fence line, the whole side of my fence line goes right against that property. Nineteen years ago, I followed my stepdad here who was wanting to fulfill his last wishes. And that was to invest. And this was one of the properties that he invested in. It was a, a vacant piece of land. And he also bought the property next to it, the property across the street, and the property all the way at the end on the corner. He did that because he knew the Sawyers next door and he also knew the Boyd's down the street. So when he built the home on this property that I'm living in today, that was for an investment. When he passed away, it was very important to me when my mom wanted to relinquish that property, that I lived in that property. It was important to him. So taking into consideration all that he did, even though it was in a flood zone, I did know that that church was there. And I did know it was a small church. I knew that the parsonage was next door. And I was well aware of... I knew that the parsonage was next door, and I was well aware of the people around me. So these were important things that I took in consideration when I did purchase that property, since I have invested a lot into that property. That is not the area I would have chosen to live in. However, I wanted to take something of him and keep it going. So would I want a commercial property along the fence line of my house? Absolutely not. With that said, I certainly don't want to hinder a sale or hurt him in any way. I do feel that that area is predominantly residential, and I do not know of me thriving businesses on that road. So I would hope that there would be better opportunities for his client. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can come back up, sir.
One more time. The current buyer is going to put up a nice privacy fence that's going to be vinyl, that's going to encase the back area of the property. We're not using it any differently than the churches are using it, really. Cars, family shows up with their vehicles, they go inside, they have a service, and then they, they leave, just like the church does. And nothing, nothing's really going to change as far as not going to have a construction site, not going to have vehicles back there with trailers and junk and all that stuff. It's really going to be well-medicated, it's going to be nicer, it's going to enhance the community, and there's not going to be huge services there because he says that he's got friends in places with big families because they do their interviews when they come in and pick their services that they are going to have. For big families, they got big churches that they can go to, West New Bern Church of God, all kinds of churches around New Bern that will accommodate bigger families and bigger funerals. This is mainly a small service funeral home. Like I said, sixty-five percent of the funerals are now cremations, so a lot of people do cremations these days. That's what it's going to be, and it's mainly going to be a ministry. He's a good Christian man, you know, he tries to preach, he's a preacher as well, he tries to preach toward God and to put Jesus in people's lives, help change their lives, really. He would be a great neighbor, a peaceful neighbor, and he's a good man. And I promise you, anybody who meets this man would say, yes, I would like him as a neighbor, for sure. So, but nothing's going to change as far as really the usage of the property. I wish we didn't have to rezone it because he, he's kind of using it as a ministry to people as well, as their common need, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do have to remember that once you do this, the change goes with the land.
Yep.
And the next person, you know, I hope Elizabeth won't try and continue to do this again.
Yes, sir.
But the next person can do anything they want.
We're, we're aware, Mr. Duffy, and someone, somebody was right behind you whenever you stood up, so we're going to let him just speak.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Brad Watson also resides at 105 North First Avenue, and I just wanted to add a couple of things to what my wife Jessica said. Jason, I understand that his guy is a good guy, and he keeps reiterating that fact, and it's going to be a small funeral home for small services. It's kind of hard to say going into it that they're going to regulate their size of services to just have little services with just a few cars. The only parking at that building is in the back, and that backs up to our property. So we will have increased traffic, increased noise, increased light. It's grass back there right now, so they're going to have to put down concrete or asphalt or some kind of substantial parking area. We are in a flood zone, so that concerns me with the storm runoff. It's, the only way it can run is towards our property, you know, what can, where can it go? And like this gentleman here just said, once this zone is changed, it doesn't have to stay a funeral home forever. It can be sold, and a different business can come in there. I don't necessarily want a funeral home in my backyard, but I really don't want any business in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Board. My name is Tony Bryant, I'm a resident at 903 South Greenburn Road, and what I'm standing up here for is basically the rezoning. In that community, we constantly have people coming in that wants to change the zoning to a business. That area is primarily residential and it needs a state. About two years ago, my neighbor tried to change his location into a C3, less than a hundred feet away from my door. Reason why I stand on this, I'm always about development, no matter people of business, but when it comes into play against residential, I always want to caution on the residential side, staying for the people. Just like a couple of months ago, y'all made a decision to, that a lady and another business next door to each other, y'all allowed it to be rezoned. In that situation, that property was basically in her front yard, was actually in her yard because they shared a driveway. Again, back to this area, I'm all about business, but when it comes into conflict with residential, I ask you to caution on the residential side. We do not need any businesses over there, it's in a flood zone, and when you start developing, you're going to, that water has to go somewhere. And if it goes off that property, it's going to go down somebody's property, now you're causing them to flood, their houses to be flooded. That's why I wanted you to reconsider. Oaks Road is already a busy road, it's a narrow road that we have, when I drive down that road, I got to deal with bikes and other traffic on that road. We do not need it complicated anymore. So I'm asking y'all, respect out of another Realtor, do not authorize this rezoning because like has been said before, you zoning today for C4, there's nothing else to stop it being used for another business. And another reason I'm standing up here, I'm evidence of that zoning being against me. Down, five doors down, I did have a business move in that was in compliment, was in agreements with the current zoning, and they said there was going to be one business, and they turned it into be a nightclub. And I had to hear that noise two minutes, three o'clock in the morning, not being able to use or have the privilege of using what I pay taxes for. So I'm on another street while I'm just thinking about those neighbors over there because this church and the house is real, in close proximity to each other because the owner of that house was the owner of the church. They sold the house, now they got the church up for sale. So if you use it for another business that can cause flooding or discomfort to another resident, I want you to say, don't agree with that. And that's why I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to point out one thing, so, including in this is the rezoning of an adjacent home. That was sold, that sale did go through, and that's a house, and as far as I can tell, the people are already, already using it as a house. So you'll be rezoning that house to C4. I just, I just, it's sold, right? Are the people living there? But it's sold, right? I mean, one more question, okay?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing?
Mayor make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I have a question for staff. I may be wrong on this, that's what I'm going to ask. It looks like under the current zoning, churches are allowed by right. If this is rezoned, churches are not permissible, is that correct?
That's right, and that's actually pointed out by the planning and zoning board as well.
Okay.
So they would have to change the use, when they got it re-permitted, it wouldn't need to be for use on this list, and, and he was correct in stating, this is not the comprehensive use chart, this is your general idea of the types of businesses that can be put in that zoning district.
Okay. The board have questions?
So it cannot be used as a church?
That's correct.
If it's rezoned, if it's.
I know, I just want to make that.
This one must not be as interesting, the last one, either, everybody's tired. Any questions or comments from the board?
A question, I guess, for the, the city attorney. There was reference made to a conditional use, can you explain that?
Yes, sir. Going back a number of years, the legislature created a new statute that allows conditional use zoning. Prior to that, it had been illegal statewide, called contract zoning. As you've noticed, everybody on the board, governing public officials, want to know what the use is going to be, and they want to pin that owner down to that specific use because that use might be appropriate and feel reasonable to you, but other uses don't. That was a tool that we didn't have up until a number of years ago, but now we have an enabling statute for local governments to adopt conditional use zoning as part of their land use ordinance so that you can control a specific use and not violate the law. But again, that's not a tool that we currently have in New Bern. We do, we do not have that tool, no, sir. It's available to us, and as Jess mentioned, something that, that I would encourage the board and planning board to think about as we go through the rewrite of our land use ordinance.
Close of the board.
If there's no more comments by the board? Make a motion? Mayor make a motion to consider adopting the ordinance to rezone 32 of Oak's Road, tax parcel eight zero thirty-one, A zero thirty-two, from R10 to C4, and it's consistent with city ordinance to rezone.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brunson?
No.
Alderman Thrill?
No.
Alderman Royal?
No.
Mayor Odom?
None. What is the motion, three, four?
It's three, four failed.
Okay, so the request is denied.
Let's, let's, let's have a, a, a motion in the affirmative, well, we're fine, we'll go with that.
You're good?
Yeah, we're, we're good.
So nothing changes.
Yes, sir.
Current zoning stays in place.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Rue, we'll move on to item number twelve, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to initially zone twenty-nine properties identified as tax parcels IDs listed below.
Thank you so much.
You are up.
All right, this is a public hearing to apply zoning for the first time to twenty-nine properties within the city's planning jurisdiction that when they were annexed and never received a zoning designation. I know this is difficult to see for legal purposes, it is in our minutes and in our documents, these are the twenty-nine properties, their addresses, and how they are legally identified. So it was brought to my attention within my first month of assuming this position that we had this situation, there's three separate areas of the city that have been incorporated into the city's planning jurisdiction, fifty-five area, the airport area, and the Carolina Colors area that just never had zoning. Why is that important? The reason it was concerning to me that we had twenty-nine properties that didn't have zoning is that we have absolutely no control over what you would use those properties for in those twenty-nine places, and so we had no way to mitigate negative impacts to adjacent property owners and go through some of the processes that we went through tonight to protect neighbors. In the absence of zoning, you would only need to come get a building permit and an environmental permit, and you could use your property for whatever you wanted without any land use regulations besides that building permit. So in order to correct this, staff did a little extra outreach. We notified the twenty-nine property owners that were impacted by mail that we were going to be discussing this at our planning and zoning board, invited them to attend, call, stop by, ask questions, send emails. We had good outreach, people were just a little bit confused, oh, I didn't know it was zoned, or, you know, things like that. We explained the zoning district that was being proposed to be applied to them, which in most cases is what was in the direct vicinity or what they actually requested to be zoned, as long as it met criteria that I'll explain here at the end of this presentation. Several people spoke in behalf of, in favor of the zoning district that was being applied to them at our planning and zoning board this meeting, and then after that, we moved forward, we called for this public hearing, and we did all the things we did for, for all of our rezoning requests that we have. We notified the property owners and all of the property owners within a hundred feet of all twenty-nine of those properties, so we did do quite a bit of outreach. I'm going to walk briefly through the three areas, if we have some specific questions about the zoning district that was applied, I may ask Steph to come up and provide a little insight, but this is the fifty-five area, there's four parcels here, those are all proposed to go to R20, that was, made sense with the existing area, slow density residential. This is the Carolina Regional Airport area, this is fourteen properties. We are recommending A5 for seven of those parcels, they are currently being used as agriculture. The property owner's advocate requested that we have these zoned A5. We have I1 next to the airport, that just makes sense, adjacent to that runway there, and then the residential districts, and there's several of them, complement the other residential districts in the area. Again, this is a summary, this has been included in your agenda packet, the specific parcels there, and then we go, there's two sections in this Carolina Colors area, and those, there's five, four of them are up front, we're recommending C3 up here, like the rest of the entrance to Carolina Colors, and then that parcel to the left of your screen there, that is proposed to be A5, that's actually not developable. And so each of those parcels was evaluated, the existing use, the suitability, the environment, environmental attributes of the property in the adjacent zoning districts, and then our planning and zoning board did review this, they, they went through each section, they had and took comments from the individuals that wanted to make comments at the planning and zoning board meeting on this. They were all accommodated and they favorably recommended this rezoning package for adoption tonight. I will call out, I had a conversation right before the meeting started with one of our citizens that had a piece of property that is right on the edge of the city, inherited a piece of property from a family member, merged that together, and Scott, I'm looking at you right now, so half, half of their property now is in the city, half isn't, the city half has zoning applied to it, they would like to, for the whole parcel not to be in the city, and I advise them we could follow up, and I will, they stuck around tonight to hear your answer for this.
Yeah, we, we don't have, it takes legislative action to de-annex.
Okay.
So we don't have a tool to let you go, once we got there.
So, but we don't have a policy that says a property can't be split zoned, to my knowledge, so.
Exactly.
There's nothing.
In fact, we allow for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because it just came up this evening. I have nothing else to add, thank you.
I, I have a question. What, what have you done since you've been here to ensure this doesn't happen again? When we annex a property, that it gets initial zoning?
Well, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night. Quite honestly, this is, it was poor planning practice, I can't answer for you why it happened or how it happened.
No, no, I'm not, I don't, I won't that.
I'm here to fix it.
Yeah, that's what I want to know, what's been done to fix it?
Moving forward, I, I don't anticipate this ever happening again. As part of our annexation process, most planning professionals that are certified and zoning professionals would. automatically bring these to you, and we will continue to do so.
Okay.
Clearly, the best practice is to rezone at the time of annexation. I suspect if we looked into it, we would find that we had a staff turnover in a particular position, and it just, it got lost, is my best guess. But clearly, best to do at the time. There are exceptions where you can't do it for various reasons, but you can do it very quickly thereafter. But I suspect we had an exception to the rule and then turnover.
This stretches a pretty wide timeframe. So it's not like this happened whenever we were in between directors or something.
Oh, no, no, no. Yes, they did not. It was lower staff, I'm thinking.
Okay.
I guess, just out of curiosity, why do we have to assign zoning to Croatan National Forest?
If it is within our planning jurisdiction, we're throwing zoning at it. Scott, I'll let you.
Because I received.
Is that what you would recommend?
It's always a better practice. And again, it's just going to be zoned consistent with its current use of a forest. So there's no downside and possible upside.
Fair question.
It just, I received a letter, and I know my property borders Croatan Forest. I was wondering why they were zoning Croatan Forest.
You'll see sections too, sir, where railroad tracks, we cross a railroad track to pick up another piece, and we want to zone the railroad track, consistent with its current use.
Any more questions for staff?
I guess I'm looking for a little more clarification on the question that Ms. Rue brought up about the property right before the meeting. So the implication is, there were two properties, and they were now, one was county, one was city. Now that they are co-joined, we're saying that it's all city?
No, sir.
No?
No, just half of it. Okay.
If you buy one acre in the city, and you buy 100 acres next to it, and now you have 101 acres, the one acre is still in the city.
Right. I guess I, okay. I guess I misunderstood that they did away with the property line and made it one property.
Which you can do by deed, but that doesn't change the city boundary. It just changes your deed.
Okay. Good question.
Any more questions for staff?
One brief question. You said that in planning and zoning, several people spoke in favor. Were there any property owners that were opposed?
There were not.
Wonderful.
And they were all invited to attend to that meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I will open a public hearing. For anyone that wants to speak for or against it, please come to the microphone at this time.
Good evening. I'm Charles Curtis. I'm a property owner. It's been discussed, and it's been very helpful listening to the explanations tonight. I just need a little clarification. Whenever we receive, first of all, I'll just say that I was out on a business trip on June 6th. I was not able to attend that meeting. We have been talking with staff about this. But just for clarification purposes, when I look at the GIS mapping, it shows all of it as R20. Is there anything that's going to be required for us to do to make sure that R20 only applies to half, the city half?
That sounds like a clerical mistake. The city can't zone beyond its border. So if there's been a clerical mistake in clicking on that parcel and covering the entire parcel in R20, it should only stop at the old property line that was within the city. Is that your question?
It does. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
That's why there's a clause on the GIST maps that says this is not perfect, so.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name's Daniel Stanton. I am an attorney with Dunn, Pittman, Skinner &amp; Ashken. I'm here on behalf of some of the Arthur landowners that are affected by this zoning. And you may have heard staff speak about interactions with landowners and positive interactions in support of this. Clearly, the Arthurs would be happy that the land stayed unzoned. But having been annexed by the city, or zoning or applicating or zonings having to be applied to it, they worked with the staff, and I helped them communicate with the staff to maintain zoning that's consistent with their current use, which is mostly farming and agriculture and some residential and their intended use in the future. And so they're very pleased with the recommendations of the staff and would be happy if the board would adopt those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Any motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. It is the pleasure of the board on item number 12.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, try to get the wording correctly on this, to adopt an ordinance to initially zone 29 properties identified on the parcels on the list unless you want me to read them.
Yes, sir. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Alderman Royal. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 13, presentation of the 2023 retail market analysis for the city of New Bern. Mr. Chris Seabird.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. I'm happy to ask to come up here, Dr. Jason Rowe. He's with the company that put this together. It's a retail market analysis for the entire area of city of New Bern. But we also looked at the regional effect to include countywide and also our municipal or metropolitan statistical area to get an idea of what retail leakage or what we're losing to our competitive markets such as Wilmington or Jacksonville. So we're trying to gauge that and create a strategic way of pursuing those types of retail industries. So ask Dr. Rowe to come and do the presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor and the board members, thank you for the time in this late hour. I'll be brief. I have a methodology section if you thought you retired earlier. Wait till we get through that. So what do I, here, move forward, just the, okay, got it. So I want to go through a brief introduction of who I am, just so you have some idea. Purpose of the study I did, overview of the methodology that I walked through, some findings, some insights, some recommended next steps, just to give some food for thought, and then open it up for questions from anyone and everyone who would be interested. So as Chris mentioned, I do consulting work, data analytics type work. I have a faculty appointed under East Carolina University as an associate professor in the College of Business. I'm specifically assigned to the Department of Marketing and Supply Chain Management. I also serve as Director of the longstanding Bureau of Business Research in the College of Business. It's been around since the 1950s, and I'm the steward of that at the moment. I have extensive experience doing work with government and industry throughout my career. Prior to coming to ECU in 2010, I was at the University of Kentucky for four years. Prior to that, I was at Marshall University. So I've been in academia, industry, and research for around 18 years plus. So the purpose of the study, Chris did a really good job there of laying it out, was to identify retail development opportunities. So I may jump into the methodology a little bit with what we look at, because that's sort of the interesting part of this. When we look at a geographic area, let's say the city of New Bern, and we use data to project retail sales, so the supply in the market, the retail sales, and then the demand from the consumers. And what we look for is how close are those matched? Okay? So if you have much greater demand in the market than the supply is showing, that demand is being met. It's just not being met in this market. It's being met elsewhere, right? So as Chris mentioned, it could be going to outlying areas, and more and more it could be going online, depending on the types of products and services. In the case of New Bern, what we see, in the city of New Bern, what we see is excess supply. So higher retail sales than what you would expect from the demographics and size of the population here, which is very common when you have a city, a municipality, or metropolitan area where people in outlying parts of the counties are coming in to satisfy their demand, if that makes sense. So tourist areas as well. So an extreme example would be if you were to look at the city of Orlando with all the theme parks, right? All the international travel, all that comes in there. Their retail supply would be off the charts compared to what the local consumers would be consuming or demanding there, right? So on a smaller scale, that's what we see here. Here is why, I'm going to jump ahead for just a second. Here is why what Chris mentioned is so important. The idea that we need to look at the outlying county and then the larger MSA, okay? Because if we look at just the city of New Bern, and we say, well, the retail supply is in excess of what the local population really should be consuming, that doesn't tell the whole story until you zoom out and look at the county. So then you look at the industry classifications, and you say, for example, grocery stores, right, as one simple example. If you were to say, well, the grocery store demand is met currently in the city of New Bern, or even maybe exceeding what it should be. But then you zoom out, and you look at the county and say, oh, wait, there's unmet consumer demand in the county. And you zoom out further, and you see continued unmet demand across the market, then you have leakage, right? You would not see that if all you looked at was the city, right? So that's an important piece of the analysis, is to be able to spread it out and look across the area. I have some specific industries noted for you here, really across the board, whether we're talking auto, auto parts, furniture stores, grocery stores jumped out. There's a reason why Harris Teeter would choose to put a flagship location just down the road, right? The analysts who make these decisions, we're all looking at the same data, right? They may have proprietary processes of how they look at that. Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, Walmart, they have their own way of analyzing the data. But we're all looking at essentially the same supply and demand data, right? Gas stations jump out as a big opportunity. I think you have a few new ones in the area, and maybe another one or two coming. Clothing stores jump out. Sporting goods stores jump out as opportunity here in the area. So when you see this demand not being met, it's going to be developed and met somewhere, right? Somewhere in the county, or it could be in the city. It just depends on how things shake out and where folks decide to put places. Restaurants, drinking places, these types of brew pubs, these types of things emerge as opportunities as well. My eyes aren't quite good enough to see that screen, so I'm shooting this. Okay. So what I just described, where we moved from the city out to the county and across the metropolitan statistical area of the MSA, that's the multi-tier analysis. So what I actually did was, I did a retail market analysis of the city of New Bern. I did a separate analysis of Craven County, which includes New Bern. Then I did a third analysis of the MSA, adding in Jones and Panamanian Code. Once I had all three of those done, I tracked the flow of the demand by NAICS code across those three territories to identify at what point is the demand leaking or being satisfied as we move out. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. The other thing that I'll point out to you, two things. The audience for this report, although we're all here tonight talking about it, we're not really the audience for this report. It's the retail decision makers, the folks that are looking to where they're going to put their next grocery store, their next furniture store, their next auto store, whatever it may be. Those are the folks who are the audience for a report like this. So what this report does is, it opens the door, gives leaders in the city a reason to contact the decision makers and say, an independent third party did some analysis, and the findings reveal a potential opportunity for your industry. We think you may want to take a closer look at this. And then they will go through and do their own due diligence with the process. But at least it helps shine a light on potential opportunity in the area.
I have a quick question for you.
Go for it.
How does online purchasing factor into your calculation?
So online purchasing could be included in leakage, right? So online sales aren't in the data. So we're looking at storefront specifically, and online sales aren't there.
So just for an example, office supplies, according to the New Bern, I'm sorry, Craven County, there's a $4.4 million leakage in office supplies. So my question is, we basically have one office supply store in the county. That $4.4 million, that leakage, that leakage could be being purchased online?
Could be online.
Okay.
Yeah. And this excludes, I should clarify, this excludes business purchases. This is only consumer purchases. Okay? So the data excludes business, business-to-business sales. It just looks strictly at consumer sales. So, exactly. And the point being there, just because it's online doesn't mean it can't be captured, right? Still could be an opportunity there. The other thing I want to say, did I answer your question, Mr.?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
The other thing I want to say is that when you look at the data, there are a couple of ways to look at this. You could look at it and say, well, there's a surplus of whatever the category may be, ABC. There's a surplus of that. That doesn't mean other ABC retailers may not be interested in doing that thing. Look at Walmart, for example. They just want to see a robust consumer base, right? They don't care so much if all the demand is currently satisfied, because they know they're going to come in, and they're going to capture a large part of that market share. Other retailers, if you think of Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, Fresh Market, these types of places, Sprouts, right, these specialty-type stores, they have a really strong differentiation strategy. So they may look at the market and say, Harris Teeter's there, Walmart Neighborhood Market's there, Food Line's there, all the grocery needs are met. But there's a strong consumer base there with good household income. We can differentiate in carbon itch and make money there. So just because the data doesn't show an opportunity doesn't always mean there's not a reason to reach out to retailers. A lot of it is how you position the findings, and how you tell the story of what you're trying to accomplish, with a few exceptions. Trader Joe's is a little tricky with how they do things. So let me jump ahead here to, I went through some of the findings and insights, very specific areas where you can look at in terms of hiring retailers, recommended next steps, what do you do with this thing? So what typically happens, a common next step, is some type of strategy session, some type of conversation around what do you want to do, right? What directions do you want to look at? Do you want to look at very specific niche retailers? Do you want to look at developments, larger commercial-type developments? How big do you want to get, right? Where's the greatest need? What are people telling you? Heard from a lot of the folks in here that were in here tonight. A lot of what I heard in here tonight really can be summed up as growing veins. This area is growing, and the report tells the same story, just from a different angle, about opportunity here to continue growing. So common next step would be doing some type of a strategy session, figuring out what are the alternatives, developing some kind of action plan, and then who's going to champion these things, and how we're going to go about doing that. A report like this can, I can draft a cover letter to drop on the front that can go to specific retailers, state government leaders, whether it's Commerce or anyone else that may want to take an interest in reading something like this or having conversations about how they can help, right? How they may be able to fund some things in order to move the ball forward a little bit. There's a lot of areas to go. That's not for me to say. My role was just to collect data, analyze data, write the data, and present it and show it to you. What you folks decide to do with it really is not up to me. What you folks decide to do with it really is not up to me, right? But it tells a story of opportunity. I think the challenge, I'll stop, I could go on for a long time. Anyway, the challenge really is where you have such a rich historic city and a growing, increasingly modernizing type city at the same time. So there's a little balance there. You have, I'm not telling you something you already know, you have natural resources like this beautiful waterfront and things that are advantaged that many cities do not have, right? So you're in a, from my perspective, with these things that I've done and people I've talked to in different areas, you're in a pretty enviable position. The final thing I have up here is anyone who has a specific interest in going further on this, I would be happy to come back. I should have said I live in Winterville, but I'd be happy to come back and take a deeper dive into the report, answer more detailed questions. If there's follow-up analysis you'd like done, happy to do anything like that to maybe provide a little more value with the report. If there are retailers that you have in town you want me to talk to, I can do that as well.
I would, I will definitely take you up on that offer. I think it's great information, you know, we hear all the time, at least I do, I'm sure you all do as well, that we have too many grocery stores in New Bern, and when you take a look at it, we are, we have $14 million overage, but when you look at Craven County, there's a $58 million leakage. So that means people that are outside, I'm assuming people outside the city of New Bern are going to another county nearby to purchase groceries, is that what I can surmise?
That's what the data would suggest. So the data would suggest you have an overage of 14 million, which means you're serving the county and perhaps beyond, but then that's still not enough to meet the demand that's there. And so they're going elsewhere, they could be going online, right? There could be a lot of things happening there.
Yeah.
But you're correct, that's.
That's right. Foster, I'd like, myself, whoever else, a couple of all of them want to join, but I think we should get Jeff Wood with the county. I know that they don't focus on retail, they're more industrial, but I think this is good information because what's happening in the county, we all get our, the same equal share of the sales tax revenue. So there may be some opportunities for us to work together. Board have questions?
I'd like to just, if you put something in.
Quick question for you. When the consumer data that you analyze, does it get into the detail of, say, permanent consumers versus transient consumers? And when I'm saying transient consumers, I'm talking about the people that are traveling through the community, going somewhere, coming back. And then the second kind of question, you know, tied into that, is when you do, you know, an analysis like this, do you factor in like the bypasses that the state is actively pursuing? Now, we have a smaller project in James City, it's not really a bypass, but it's affecting not the city of New Bern with city limits, but an adjacent area where a lot of the business and commercial has been forced to relocate with the intent, you're getting traffic through your community faster. So you're either losing the opportunity or you're maybe picking up opportunity. But if you look at like the Havlock bypass, the Kingston bypass, a much bigger impact. I mean, does your analysis kind of look at those type of issues?
So to answer the first question first, with what you consider transient, people passing through, tourists who are here for a few days or a week, that type of thing, we would expect to see that impact showing up on the retail supply side because the consumer side is taking the demographics of the area, the people, the household income, these types of demographics, and projecting their consumer spending of what they should be consuming. So then you see they should be spending this, well, then all of a sudden you see the retail sales or supplies actually up here, then you know the area is either pulling from an outside area to get people to come in and consume, or it's a high tourist or transient area. There's, that business is coming from somewhere, it's not coming from the residents of that defined area that you're looking at, if that answers your question. The second question you ask on the bypass, that's one of the tricky things about doing a report like this, if you all have a copy and if you've looked at it, it's very complex, it's a high level of detail. It not only involves things like population, demographics, financial figures, but there are facts and statements woven throughout from the Department of Transportation and others. So what I do, when I do these reports, is I go in through the Department of Transportation, I look at all the current projects, I look at what they're projected to do, when they're coming onboard and all this type of thing. I go through, do media searches to see if I've missed something along the lines of something like that. And I actually do a field day, at least one day, but I'll do a field site survey in the area. So I came down here and spent a day just walking around, talking to people, business people, cashiers, just asking questions about what could the city benefit from? What are you missing? One of the things I put up here that came up was someone, three people actually mentioned, we need more for young people to do, we need more for teens and tweens, we need more for them to do in the city, right? So that's something that wouldn't show up in the data, that you maybe have an opportunity for that, but you're going to pick up that nuance by having conversations with people who are in the community and who know that. Back to the point on the roads and the highways and things, I'm very, very meticulous on figuring those things out, but at the same time, it's hard to project forward and say, this is what it's going to look like in a year, or two, or three, or four, because if you've looked at the DOT website, you'll see something that says, this is scheduled to start in 2022. You check it in, 2022, this is scheduled to start in 2024, this is projected to start in 2025, this will be done. It's just constantly moving, so I wouldn't be able to give you good data or projections, even if I tried based on some of those moving targets. So this is really a current view snapshot of the best available data and what it sort of indicates Forrest was talking about. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I have a question. Where did you, when it comes to the median household income, where did you obtain that information for this analysis that by 2027, the median income in New Bern will be projected to be 58, about 58.5 thousand? Where did you obtain that information?
So that comes, there's a company, you mentioned GIS, so there's a company that I believe are owned by ArcGIS called Esri, and they do business data, just like we talk about GIS doing the geographic data, they do business data. So those are based on their projections. I think it's probably buried somewhere in the appendices, but if you were to go through the appendices at the top, a lot of the times they'll lay out those projections. So that comes from their data. And in fact, if you look at their data, they have, I think it's the current, what they consider current, median household income's around $48,000. If you were to Google that number to see what Google says it is, it comes back somewhere around $45,000, I think, in that neighborhood. So, and some of that, if you think about anecdotally, inflation and wage increase since the pandemic, some of these wages have had to go up so much to keep service workers in hotels and restaurants and this type of thing, it's not inconceivable that income could go from 48 to 58, but the price of goods could go up even more.
Exactly.
Right? Even more. And it always seems to be the case that wages do not keep up anywhere near with inflation, as we've seen. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board? Well, thank you very much for the gift, Chris.
Yeah, if I may, sir.
Sure.
I'd be remiss not to point out, this is a huge piece in our puzzle. Staff is also finishing up a retail inventory of the entire city. We're not going beyond the city, we understand the regional effect on that, but the whole purpose of this inventory is try to get some of the homework done ahead of time for potential retail establishments. So we will have vacant parcels that are possible, vacant structures that are possible, the marketing info, if it's by Realtor or by a firm, just trying to gauge the whole gamut and do a lot of the homework for a potential retail establishment. Our goal is retail attraction, but also retention. So we're just trying to make things more palpable, make the city more attractive for them to bring their business to us. So I think it's important for the board to know the other items we're also looking at, we're putting all these pieces together in one good toolbox.
And you'll be able to find this information online on the Community and Economic Development link, you really can look at it at the very bottom of our website at newbernnc.gov. We, when I first got on the board back in 2014, you might as well say, we were starting to do a really good job at this, and then we had changes in personnel, changes of focus, and of course we had hurricanes and things, and it got derailed. But I think you can see early on, some of the places that you mentioned called out, you know, the Public Shopping Center, the Harris Teeter Shopping Center, all those were done by a lot of work on the city's behalf to make sure that we were ready and accepting for those developers. So it's good to see we're getting back on track, because that's where we need to be.
If I could add just one more thing, if you all have a copy of the report to take with you later, if you flip to the back, you'll see I did a little sort of bonus write-up on a comparable city, and I draw some parallels and talk about how they addressed, started around 20 years ago, but how they addressed the challenges that may have some relation to what you have here in New Bern. So I thought of it, I did the research, I put it in as a little something extra, just again to provide some food for thought.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item number 14, we have a presentation on financing options. You gotta keep us awake here, so.
Do my best.
Well, board, as you may recall, during the budget workshop meetings, we discussed the upcoming financing needs for the Stanley White Rec Center project, sewer improvement projects, and the FY '23, '24 vehicles and equipment. These projects are moving along, therefore it's time to seek funding or financing. This morning, we met with the LGC and Davenport to discuss our financing plans and aggressive timeline to target a September closing date. Discussion materials from that meeting have been provided to you. It's this packet here, and that's for informational purposes. This packet provides more detail and supports the overview presented to you today. I'd like to introduce Ted Cole, Senior Vice President and Manager of Public Finance with Davenport. Mr. Cole will review our financing options for the Stanley White Rec Center, the sewer improvement projects, and the FY '23, '24 vehicle and equipment capital purchases.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Again, I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. We have presented to you all before, it's been a couple of years, some of you may recall. Generally, our work revolves around capital planning, debt issuance, capital projects, and as Kimberly said, we wanted to talk about three specific projects this evening. The LGC material has already been sent around. Yeah, so that's a bigger package, it's maybe 15 slides, it has more detail in there. I'm going to talk off of what was in the agenda packet and what's on the screen, which is more of a summary, but happy to answer any questions as I go. On this slide page two, three basic financings that we're looking at, the first being for vehicles and equipment, so police vehicles, other vehicles, public works, vehicles and trucks, at an estimated cost of about $4.8 million. We have what we're calling an NTE, that's a not to exceed financing amount, we're grossing that up just a little bit to $4.9 million. So that's the number we're working with for vehicles and equipment. I'll talk a little more about how we would propose to finance that in a moment. Secondly, would be the Stanley White Recreation Center, that's the renovation of a facility. We've got a total project construction of about $13.2 million, other design costs and related costs of about $1.1 million between insurance and FEMA reimbursements or FEMA commitments, you've got about $8 million in funding now. So we've got a net project need for funding of about $6.3 million, right? To fully fund the project. So that will be the basis of the borrowing for the Stanley White Rec Center. On the right-hand side of that, you'll notice that we've got a $10 million not to exceed financing, and that's somewhat unique in that we have FEMA, and there's a couple of things that revolve around the FEMA funding. One is you submit reimbursements to them and they take some period of time to process the reimbursements. So there's some cash flow considerations. And then secondly, and maybe more importantly, they hold back 25% of their funding commitment until the project is complete. So you need to be, as a city, you need to be prepared to fund the entire project and their final 25%, which is almost $2 million, comes on the back end. So for that reason, we are moving forward with sort of two components to the Stanley Rec Center financing, a long-term and permanent 6.3, we round it up to 6.5 million, that's the gap, that's what you need to supplement FEMA and insurance. And then a separate three and a half million estimated that we would hope would only be out there for a couple of years, cash flow borrowing to facilitate the FEMA process. So in actuality, we might close on a total of $10 million, but the three and a half would be, would go away once FEMA's process has fully run its course, which again is estimated to be, once the project is final, they do their review and they make their final 25% of funding available. So that three and a half really allows for some cash flow so that you're not relying completely on city reserves to front the FEMA funding, okay? And then finally, sewer projects, Interceptor and Forest Main projects, there's a little more detail in the larger packet about those projects. Total cost on the Interceptor, I'm rounding, 1.2, the Forest Main, 5.4. You've got some state ARPA funding and Golden Leaf funding, that's the $700,000. So we've got a net borrowing need of approximately 5.9, and for the not to exceed discussion that we had with the Local Government Commission, we're talking about 6.1. Keep in mind, all of these projects are bid, you have firm bids in hand, and we're only going to borrow what you need, but when we talk about not to exceeds, we're just grossing up a little bit so that we're not cutting it too closely. That's what you're going to see when we have some initial resolutions, that's what you're going to see when there's a public hearing, notice for the Rec Center. But rest assured, at the end of the day, when it comes time to close, we're only going to fund what you need to fund construction and issuance costs. So those are the three main projects. Any questions on those? All right. So let's talk a little bit about how we would go about financing these. And again, we had this conversation with the Local Government Commission in Raleigh this morning, they will ultimately approve two of these three financings. Vehicles actually, because we're looking to repay the vehicles over a five-year term, that financing would be exempt from LGC approval, that's a carve-out that they make available. But nonetheless, we talked to them about it, the type of financing.
What, real quick, what is that? Is that a five-year, is that their limit? So anything above five years?
Well, it's a combination of the fact that it's a vehicle, it's rolling stock, and you're keeping it within the five years, that you can do it without their approval.
Okay, thank you.
It's, so that will be financed under what we call an installment financing. Essentially, the security will be a lien on the vehicles, very common, very, very standard approach to financing those things, a five-year term and what we call level payment, which would be like a mortgage. Every year, your payment would be the same between principal and interest. So that's the vehicle component, separate and apart by itself. The recreation would also be financed as an installment. In this case, the security on the loan would be a mortgage or a deed of trust on the facility, again, a very common way of financing projects like that. We've designed. We've discussed going 15 or 20 years on that. When we do our request for proposal, I'll talk a little bit about that. We're going to ask the banks for both 15 and 20-year terms, longer-term asset. And the amortization on that would be what we call level principal. So the principal component of your payment each year is the same. Therefore, the interest is highest on year one and it declines. So when we have that borrowing, and this is really driven by the Local Government Commission's requirements, protocols for that type of a long-term, tax-supported project, the Rec Center. Year one will be your highest payment and then it will step down over the term, 15 or 20 years. That's what we call level principal. And then finally, the sewer projects, that would be funded through revenue bonds. You all have, as a city, you have a revenue bond credit that has been established. And you've used that before to fund water, sewer, and/or electric capital projects. And in that type of a borrowing, what the lender is getting is they're getting a lien on your utility revenues, not taxing authority and not a lien on an asset. They're getting a lien on utility revenues, that's the revenue bond. It's established, it's now a very efficient way to fund that type of a project. So it would be secured by the revenues of the system. And the system is defined as electric, water, and sewer, as a legal pledge of revenues. But in reality, I think as you're budgeting, you'll make the payment from the sewer fund. But to the bondholder or the lender, they have a lien on the revenues of that combined system. That will be a 15- or 20-year term, we're going to request both. And because it's a revenue bond for utility purposes, we can do, again, level payment mortgage style, where every year the payment between principal and interest combined is the same. So different types of financings, depending on the project, installment versus revenue bonds, different types of security, and different terms based on the expected useful life of the various assets. And this is all, you know, you've got a lot coming together at one time, but these are all pretty straightforward financing approaches in and of themselves. Okay? Lot going on on page four, but hopefully this will make some sense. We'll be back to you potentially at three more meetings for these. So let me sort of break down what we've done here. This evening, July 11th, you all have taken action to call for a public hearing, to set a public hearing. That's going to be held on August 8th. And that public hearing will only be for the Rec Center. That's the only project within the three that requires a public hearing because you are pledging real property to a lender, and that's what the law requires. So the public hearing will be for the Rec Center, the other two don't require a public hearing. We have developed and working closely with your staff and the bond attorneys, requests for proposals, RFPs. We have one for vehicles, one for Stanley Rec Center, and one for the revenue bond that we will put out on your behalf to a wide range of lenders. We maintain a very broad list of lenders that look at these. We'll be in touch with them, we'll field questions. And ultimately, what we've penciled in is August 3rd to bring those responses back. So we've set up a competitive process, what we call direct bank loans. And this is something you all have done many times before. And we're going to be requesting through these three separate RFPs, proposals from banks for the vehicle loan, the Rec Center, and the revenue bonds. They can bid on one, both, all three, whatever they are interested in doing. We're trying to maximize the response rate on that. We have to submit LGC applications for the Rec Center and the sewer vehicles. There's no application required because they're not approving that. That has to be in by early August for, because we're targeting the September LGC. They only meet once a month to approve debt, and you have to have your application in about a month ahead of time. So early August, we'll coordinate with staff to get that in. And then we have three potential board meetings. August 8th, we would hold the public hearing, right, for the Rec Center only. And we would do what's called a preliminary findings resolution. You all would consider a preliminary findings resolution, one for the Rec Center and one for the sewer. And that would be essentially the first of two approvals for those two borrowings. You're going to have two different approvals. The first one basically is doing things like approving the submittal of the application and other sort of housekeeping items, I would call it. Those aren't specific to the bank lenders themselves because we're asking you to consider those preliminary findings before you've seen the bank proposals. So it's the first step, it's required, but it's not your last chance to vote on these borrowings. You'll have another opportunity to vote. And when that second vote comes, what's called the, we're showing the final approval, either on August 22nd or September 12th, you'll have all of the data you need to make an informed decision. So August 8th, public hearing on the Rec Center, findings resolution on the Rec and Revenue. Coming back on August 22nd, and we're going to present to you all the proposals we've received on all three RFPs. So we might have had three banks on one, four banks on another, five on the third, what have you. We'll present all of those, we will have vetted those very thoroughly with staff. We'll be presenting a recommendation on each of the three. And it's at that meeting where we'll look for direction from you all to go with, you know, lender one, two, and three, whatever the case may be. We may be able to get the final approvals in place that same night. It just depends on which bank is likely to be recommended and whether those documents can get pulled together in that time period. I'm not absolutely counting on that, which is why we've shown the September 12th meeting as the meeting where you could take the final action on all three borrowings. So initial actions in early August, selecting the banks at the August 22nd meeting. People go back and do their work and put these final approvals together, documents, and you consider those at your September 12th board meeting. That's when you can decide yea or nay on each of the three. The Local Government Commission would take these up at their September 12th meeting. Again, it's the Rec Center and the Revenue Bond. And if those are approved, we should be able to close on all of those loans by the end of September. You'd have the money in hand, you have the money in hand, you can pay yourselves back for any money you've already fronted for any projects. And then you can just pull down the funds as needed for each project. We are talking about doing tax-exempt borrowing, because your local government, these projects all qualify for tax-exempt financing. Talk about doing fixed rates. We would expect that each of these loans will have some ability to be prepaid early with the banks. It kind of depends on the bank, but that's part of what we'll assess when the proposals come in. We'll be looking at the rates, the terms and conditions, and coming up with a recommendation. I think that's all we had to present. Any questions?
Board have questions?
Given the nature of today's economy, is this a good time, bad time, or indifferent time to be going into the marketplace for financing?
You know, I talked to somebody over the weekend, a former colleague of mine who was in the business for a long time. And I said, you know, rates are up, rates are high. He goes, well, let me tell you, they might be high compared to a year, year and a half ago, but on a historical basis, they're pretty darn attractive. So we're going to be talking about 20 years fixed rates, you know, 4%, 4.5%? Just as a range, you might see a bid come in at 4.75%. Sub-5% fixed rate for 20 years. You know, a year and a half, two years ago, maybe you were in the 3% or a little bit lower. So it all depends on what you're comparing it to. But I think over a longer-term historical look back, they're still on the lower side of the average, but not as low as they were a year ago, a year and a half ago. And we'll pay a lot of attention to what the prepayment ability is for each of these loans. And, you know, you may be locking in borrowing a little bit higher than you'd like to, but I would hope that we'll have some options to be able to prepay those over some period of time and take advantage of potential future lower rates if we see those.
Now, just a quick question, Foster, Kim, if you know the answer to this. On the $4.9 million for the vehicles and equipment, roughly what percentage of that is general fund versus the enterprise funds?
Kim, can you answer that?
Okay, that's fine, just out of curiosity, it's not a critical.
I think historically, the vast majority is out of the general fund. Unless they're buying a big bucket truck.
And we did opt to finance some of the utility vehicles, so that they were so expensive this year, looking at cash flow. But it's probably going to be closer to 90% general fund.
I have a question, I don't see it here, and it's late and I may have forgotten it, but what are we doing about the City Hall financing? Has that already been done, the elevator?
It's already done.
What was our interest rate on that, do you know, remember? Less than four? I thought it was like 3.75 maybe. Okay. Board have any more questions?
I do have your answer, the general fund is about $2.6 million of that.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to item number 15, consider adopting an ordinance for the demolition of 1503 Quinn Anne Street. Mr. Patrick Inzell.
Board, Mr. Mayor, pleasure to be here this evening to present another package to you. On this one, before we start, you say Queen Anne Street, Mr. Mayor, it's actually Queen Anne Lane for the Rec.
Okay, it's in our agenda, it's Queen Anne Street.
Apologies for that error there. But staff is seeking a proposal or approval on the orders to demolish the structure located at 1503 Queen Anne Lane. In the past, staff has sent the owner of record the initial minimal housing letter in October of 2022, stating that the dwelling located at that address is in deficiency and violation of the city minimal housing codes. Staff has spoken with the neighbors as well as some of the relatives of the home to contact the owner and their known heirs. The staff has made contact with the heirs in March of 2023, which is, in which the heirs stated they wanted nothing to do with the property and stated that the owner at that time was deceased. Staff filed a complaint on this notice appearing in April 2023 with confirmed delivery and confirmation of all the appropriate paperwork on that as well. And then one of the heirs had a potential buyer on the property, but that never came through. That happened in April of 2023, around the same time that we had the hearing on this property. As a result of the hearing in April 2023, the order of the building inspector was issued and was served to the heirs with all the compliances to go along with that as well. And we declared that this property at that time was in the dilapidated status. We had given them the timeframe of May of 2023 to bring the property into compliance, which they did not do. The property is still sitting there, dilapidated at this time. No permits have been applied for, and the structure still remains non-compliant. The estimated demolition cost of public works was drawn on this one at $7,590. And all utilities have been terminated at this time. Complete list of the chronological events is in your packets, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Board have questions? Orin Brinson.
In your packet, as late as May 4th, there was somebody living there. Do we know if it's still occupied?
Gentleman that was living there is a gentleman that was living there when the owner had passed away. According to the gentleman, he was able to live there with no written lease from the owner. At my last check, there was nobody living there, and I did go double-check that today. We found no evidence of anybody living in that house. But if there is, then we'll have to go through the process of making sure that person is removed from the house before the house is demolished.
Okay, and your process to remove is what?
Some, you're jacking it through the courts.
Yeah, okay.
And if there is someone living there, they're living there illegally because there's no utilities turned on to the building, correct?
Correct.
Another question, please. You mentioned a potential buyer. I had discussed with Mr. Hughes about a gentleman who had interest in this property. Was there not any negotiations made further than that? I can't remember his name, but I'm sure you're aware of him, who said he wanted to purchase this property and that he was willing to absorb the cost to even demolish the property.
There were actually multiple people that are interested in buying property. The first person, I do not remember his name, that got in the conversation with the two sisters, there were heirs. Apparently rubbed the heirs the wrong way, and their initial contact, wanting to make contact with them, was they want nothing to do with the property to begin with. As a favor to me, they talked to this first gentleman. And just because of a bunch of different delays and they're not feeling comfortable in the situation, they decided to walk away from the first buyer and instructed me that they're not going to entertain any offers from anybody else. That's unfortunate for that one. As of two days ago, I called again because there was another person that reached out and said, hey, let them know, offer's still on paper.
Any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board on item number 15?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the demolition of 1503 Queen Anne Avenue. You said?
Correction.
Lane.
Oh, Lane, I'm sorry.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? I just have one, maybe a public works question. If this is approved and the utilities are cut off and there's nobody inside, what's the timeline on demolition?
Our policy is, once you approve the ordinance, I have to go back through. Because we're sending in city workers, we have to test for asbestos. So if there's asbestos there, and that asbestos has to be abated, once that asbestos is abated, then public works can usually get that scheduled within 30 days.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or discussion? If not, have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie, it's on the demolition of 1503 Queen Anne. Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Inzell.
Thank you, Mr. Inzell.
Item number 16, consider adopting an ordinance to establish the Stanley A. White Recreation Center project. Ms. Ostrom.
The city has received $500,000 in insurance proceeds, and allocated $7,506,659 from FEMA to rebuild the Stanley White Rec Center. On May 23rd, 2023, the board authorized execution of a $13,180,400 contract with TA Loving for construction of the facility. This ordinance will establish the project fund utilizing the insurance proceeds, FEMA funds, and the debt proceeds.
It's a pleasure of the board on item number 16.
I would like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to establish the Stanley White Rec Center, excuse me, project fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Alderman Brinson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 17, consider adopting a resolution approving a decoration. Yes, motion carries. Item number 17, consider adopting a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the Stanley A. White Recreation Center project. Ms. Ostrom.
As discussed earlier with the presentation, it's necessary to adopt a declaration of official intent to reimburse prior to incurring expenses for the Stanley White Rec Center project. Doing so allows the city to pay itself back for items paid for the, for prior, paid prior to obtaining financing. Sorry, it's late. The cost of the project will be paid through a combination of insurance proceeds, FEMA funding, and debt financing that exceed $10 million.
At the pleasure of the board, we could actually do 7, 18, and 19 together. If you want to give us an update on 18 and 19 as well.
Sure. 18 is approving a declaration of intent to reimburse for the fiscal year 24 vehicles and equipment. Again, as we talked earlier during the presentation, it includes the purchase of vehicle and equipment capital items totaling 4.8 million. It's necessary to adopt a declaration of official intent to reimburse prior to incurring expenses for those purchases. It allows the city to pay itself back. And it was for $4,817,506. We also have number 19, a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the Northwest Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase 2 project. The fund was established on April 26, 2022, in a contract tentatively awarded to Institute of Form Technologies in the amount of $1,244,166 on June 12, 2023. The project will be funded with $230,000 in ARPA funds and the remainder will be financed. It's necessary to adopt a declaration of official intent to reimburse prior to incurring expenses for those purchases.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to adopt several resolutions approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the Stanley White Recreation Center project, the FY24 vehicles and equipment, and the Northwest Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase 2 project. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Pril.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 20, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY2324. Ms. Ostrom.
This ordinance amends the FY2324 general fund operating budget by appropriating $360,000 from fund balance for straight resurfacing and $220,000 for sidewalk and curb improvements. These funds were budgeted in FY2223, but since the projects were not completed, the encumbered funds were returned to the general fund's fund balance. The amendment also appropriates $62,000 from fund balance for anticipated overtime in the fire department and $189,000 for an increase in property and equipment insurance costs.
Board have questions?
Yes, what is the sidewalk, sidewalk and curb improvement project funds now since these funds were not used with the current 2324 budget for sidewalks?
Mr. Charles.
Good evening, board. Yes, the FY23 for the sidewalk, we actually just received this week the final plans for these engineered design sets for the sidewalk that's going to go down those boulevard that would connect the South Gate community to, to the shopping areas down to the closure of Highway 17. And we anticipate bidding those out in several weeks and fulfilling that, that obligation.
So that's what those funds would be.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Just as they were.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George. It's a pleasure of the board on item number 20.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 202324.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yeah.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Yeah, yeah. So moving on to item number 21. Got several appointments. I'm going to run through these as they're listed in our package. And then if there's any I missed, we'll come back to those. So the first one I have is Alderman Royal, appointment to the Board of Adjustment for Peter Dillon.
I am still currently waiting to hear from some interested parties. However, I would like to recommend that Mr. Mike Duffy remain as the alternate for the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mike Duffy to be reappointed as an alternate for the Board of Adjustments. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We also, looks like we have, we had two alternates, Mike Duffy and Kathleen Marty. Does anyone have, anyone for Ms. Kathleen Marty's seat?
I have not had the opportunity to speak to her. I have reached out to her. Perhaps by the next meeting, I will have an answer from her.
Okay, very good. Moving on, Alderman Royal, you have another one to the HPC for Ruth, Dr. Ruth Cox's term.
I would like to make a motion for Mr. Richard Parsons to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. He is a resident of the historic district and he is familiar with the district guidelines. He's committed to preservation. He has prior experience with the historic district and he was a past member of the Board of Adjustments.
So I have a motion for Mr. Richard Parsons.
Richard Martin? Okay.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Parsons is on. Alderman Kenzie, you have an opening for Raymond Layton's term on the Planning and Zoning Board.
I haven't had an opportunity, sir. I'll meet him next time.
Okay. Alderman Brinson, you also have one for planning and zoning for Pat Dogarty's term?
I would also like to defer mine.
Okay. Next, we have, still have, is it one term or two for civil service board? We have one.
One.
I had shared a resume that I had received. The board had an opportunity to look at that or not?
Mayor, I would, or I have, and I would like to recommend a Richard Schultz of 107 Oregon Court to the Police Civil Service Board. Mr. Schultz has several years' experience in police administration.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Schultz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is approved. We've got just a reminder about the appointments for the Redevelopment Commission. I believe those we will make at the next Board of Alderman meeting to make sure we're not filling a term that has not yet expired. So just a reminder on that one. And did I miss any? Alderman Brinson, I forgot you have your committee. Go ahead, sir.
So as I've been discussing the last several months, standing up the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we passed the ordinance several months ago. Standing up that committee, I've been both recruiting and receiving interest and I have passed the resumes of all that have submitted them to you. And I'll just read out the names. William Hand, Henry Gleisberg, Rob Overman, Stephen Clayton, Mary Davidson, Mark Williamson, Bill Sadler, Ben Lindeman, Virginia Spencer. Received interest from Danny Batten, but he did not submit a resume. Stuart Flight Jr. and John Back. And I guess, and I also provided to you what awards they were in or what community they were in if they were not in the City of New Bern and kind of summarized their experience. And in talking with both the mayor and the attorney, we thought that the best way to do this is to have a ballot for all seven of us. You essentially would vote for five people and then the clerk will tally the, I guess, the winners of the, being appointed to the board. And then my recommendation further is those that receive the most recommendations, since there are various terms, there's two at three years, two at two years, and one at one year. Basically, the precedent we set, the most votes would receive the longest term. If there are ties for that, then we'll have to adjudicate that separately.
Okay.
Say all that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So does any, everyone good with that? I guess a fair way to do it, since we have so many openings. So does the clerk have ballots? Okay.
And we also have hard copies of the resumes if you would like to look at them one last time.
As a reminder, the ballots are public record.
Yes, they are. Thank you. Yes, sir. While the clerk is doing that, in the event we do have a tie, we'll just revote to resolve whatever ties there may or may not be. Thank you.
We got security who's going to take these ballots up?
I got it.
Thank you, sir. If it's okay with the board, while the clerk tallies those up, we'll move on through the agenda because I'm sure everyone's ready to get out of here. So next item is the attorney's report.
Nothing important, ma'am, mayor.
All right, city manager's report.
Couple of things for you. At the last meeting, we were talking about the BP project and we're going to have a full update for you on the first meeting in September. We, Fourth of July holiday, we weren't able to compile as much information as we wanted to. So we'll have full information for you at that time. The Redevelopment Commission held a special call meeting on June 28 and during that meeting, they asked the city to handle the bidding process for construction of the spec house project on Jones Street. So I wanted to make sure that the board had no issues with, with staff doing that. And so just like to get some direction from you if you, if you had no issues with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Would you repeat it, please?
Yes, at the special call meeting of the Redevelopment Commission, that board voted unanimously to ask the city staff to handle the bidding process for the Jones Street property with the three spec houses. They felt it would be, be easier for staff to, to address that as opposed to the commission to do that. And that's all we would be doing is just the bidding process.
Any action from us or just?
Just give direction saying you have no issue with that.
I, I have no issue with that.
I had no issue with it.
Questions?
I'm good.
Are, are you sure that they, that's all that they were looking for? I, I was under the impression that
Thank you.
they want to kind of turn the whole process over of managing the facility to the city as well.
We've got one more item, which is the Wellness Center, so we're not at that one yet. So in terms of the Jones Street property, that's, from my understanding, that's all they've asked.
My apologies.
That's all they were asking. They, they don't understand the rules and the regulations and especially when we're dealing with ARPA money. They just wanted to make sure that they did everything correctly.
Any discussion or comments? Alderman Kenzie, Best, Pril, and the Royal, I didn't hear if you were okay with that.
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, we got four.
Okay. And then the next item is they voted to ask the, ask the city to receive the Bloomfield lot and the adjoining properties as well as take back the three, what's remaining of the $350,000 that were allocated for the Wellness Center for the city to build that facility. And they, they recognized that basically with the Redevelopment Commission state statutes, they were limited in what they could and could not do. The city has broader authority to be able to do some things. They felt that with the city building that, it could have been done in a more efficient manner. They're still on board with wanting to partner to find other entities to, to manage the center, but they wanted to get this project off the ground. So I wanted to hear your comments on that.
I'll just, I'll share with the board that I think you all know Mr. Reggie Jones. Reggie has been a community advocate, trying to get this building pushed through for a long time. He continues to push and the Redevelopment Commission continues to find out what their limitations are and things that they can and can't do. They can't own the facility, they can't lease the facilities, and they certainly can't operate the facility. So what they've asked is for the city to step in. And I want to, I want to be careful that, I'm assuming we'll probably move forward with this for progress here, but I want to be careful that we don't diminish the work that the Redevelopment Commission has done on this particular issue because they've done a lot. They've had a couple of committees for health and wellness. There's been a lot of background work that's been done. They've made a lot of connections. We had a meeting a week before last with North Carolina Central University, who has some funding that's available for some programming. The health department's been involved, the hospital's been involved, and there seems to be a lot of good positive momentum going forward. The Redevelopment Commission just doesn't have the legal ability as well as the, really the, I guess, the, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, but same thing with the house. Yeah, yeah, the, the wherewithal, like just same situation with the house, the going through the bidding process and all that's something that they're not really set up to do. So they've asked us to do that. Now again, if, if the board gives the okay direction for that, still doesn't mean that we're committed to do this. It doesn't mean that we're saying, yes, we're going to build this, yes, we're going to operate it. But this is just saying, yes, in the spirit of moving forward with the concept, we're going to do that instead of the Redevelopment Commission, who essentially cannot do it. So, did I miss anything?
No, you're correct.
So is that something that we want to take on? As a board?
I'll speak up and say I'm fully supportive of the project. It's something that the previous board started. We originally allocated $250,000 and at a future meeting, we allocated another $100,000. So the total budget is 350. The, the house where the location, they acquired the property because it was originally, starting with the McCotter House, realized that wasn't going to work, so they purchased the property behind it so they would have enough ground to do what they wanted to do. McCotter House has been demolished, the land's been cleared off. So I mean, I think it's something that we certainly, it's a, it's a commitment that essentially the previous board made to the community and it's something that I would like to see us follow through with and not fall short of that commitment.
So what you're saying is that the efforts that Mr. Jones has been working toward in getting this cell facility together, this is what you're pushing for?
100%, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm with that.
One other question for clarity. You said that even if we give direction tonight, it does not mean we're going to, and you named out several things.
Yes, I think we, in the spirit of what's happened so far, the previous board allocated the $350,000 and the, deeded the property of the McCotter House to the Redevelopment Commission, which is now in their name. The Redevelopment Commission purchased the property behind it and that's also in their name. So what they're saying is they want to give the city the property and give us the $350,000 back so we can then move forward with whatever process or procedure that it would take to take the next step. Doesn't mean that when we take this back, everything's going to be signed on the dotted line and we're, we're, we have to do that. But that's been the spirit all along with that money and that property. I think we're a long ways away from something really happening, but we're a lot closer than we have been.
And so i- if you give direction that you want to proceed with this, this will be on the next agenda?
I guess I, I have no issues taking the property and the money back. I guess I, I have no issues taking the property and the money back, and probably even building the building. I'm not sure that the city should be managing it, so that's all.
I completely agree. I have no desire for the city to get into that business at all. I believe that there's going to be a lot of partnerships that's going to come out of this. But typically, what's been happening is, they've been having these conversations with Duke and NC Central, and they've all said, well, where's your building? Where's your facility? You know, we have the programming and staffing, but we have to have somewhere to put it. And then the Redevelopment Commission, especially the, the Health and Wellness Committee, is saying, well, we're going to build it, but we haven't built it yet. So that's kind of the chicken or the egg situation. But I agree, I have no desire whatsoever for the city to operate this.
Unlike you all, Mr. Brinson, I, I don't think that's the direction that we should take. It's not a good idea.
Well, the city's not going to build the, the center. I mean, that is, I'll go through a bid process for a contractor.
No, ma'am, what, you're talking about managing the?
Oh, of course, no, I haven't gotten there yet. Excuse me. Of course, the city's not going to build the property, it would be contracted out, and for its management of the center. That's a conversation that the Redevelopment Commission has spoken numerous times about, they have their, their different agencies that was going to support that center for the services that they provide. So I, I don't have a problem with the city taking the money back, as long as that property is built, that center is built. And I know Mr. Torey Wallace, one of the commissioners, is real adamant about him and Mr. Jones worked really hard on finding these, these sponsors, these UNC, other eight, I don't even, can't even remember all of the different agencies that's going to support them. So I, I'm for this center, and I hope this center gets built. You know, I, Mayor, when you say you don't know if it's going to be built, I mean, that, that's kind of.
Well, the reason I say that is because if four members of this Board take the property back and the money and decide they don't want to do it, then this is the pleasure of this Board. So when we, when we get the property and the money back, it's up to this Board to make that decision. I hope that's not the case.
Well, well, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm alluding to that, so I hope that that's not the, the issue. So.
Well, I hope in my statement, it was clear.
I don't have a problem with taking the money back, as long as the building is built and that center is standing.
I think Manager just said, if, if we give direction that we're okay to have it on the next agenda, then don't have it on the agenda, we'll take that.
I agree.
Okay, you got, you got a good, solid, four, five, maybe six, possibly seven.
I'm not going to admit it.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have, sir.
All right. New business, starting with Alderman Prill?
I have no new business.
All right, Alderman Royal?
No new business.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Kinsey?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. Mr. Hughes and Mr. Childs are still here. I don't like to put you on the spot, Mr. Childs, if you could come forward, please, and Mr. Hughes, but I, when I get complaints from my constituents about certain things in this city that I have asked this, to be, and I, and I'll be specific, Mr. Childs, Evergreen Cemetery, I have asked numerous times when, where you're going to get the debris up front, which is a nuisance, an eyesore for our citizens that come in and bury their loved ones. There's a log that's been laying there for years, a rotten log, debris. And then if you go to the back of the cemetery, there's a fence that's broken, been broken down, and it's overgrown vegetation. And the shelter up front, where citizens have to stand under when it's raining, if funeral is going on at the time, it's leaking. I've asked for this to be repaired, so why, what is the delay? What is the delay? Can you give me some answer? What is the delay in, in getting these, these?
I can, I can.
Issues correct?
Alderman Best, I can address the, the shelter. I know last summer, staff went in there and painted and did some work on it. It's leaking, and we'll make sure that staff goes back out there and checks that out again.
You painted it?
Yes, ma'am, they did.
What color did you paint it?
I think it was a black, but they painted it up.
You need to go take a, you need to take a look, go back over and take a look at it, please, sir, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
And, and regarding the vegetated debris I'll get with Parks and Rec and, and check, they usually do the mowing in that facility, but there's some heavier stuff that we need to remove for them.
If I need to meet them over there to direct them to the area where I'm speaking of, I don't know how they can miss it, but I'll meet you over there.
Yes, ma'am, I am certainly.
To pinpoint the areas.
I am certainly.
I would appreciate it, sir. And I'm pretty sure my, our citizens and constituents would appreciate it as well. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, Alderman Brinson?
I'll just state for the record, I sent you guys a summary of the meeting of the Craven County Opioid Task Force, and their new designation and their annual meeting, so you have that on, on email. It's annual meeting hosted by the Craven County, basically to talk about the programs that they're going to fund and administer as part of the opioids center. And that's all.
Okay, I have nothing tonight. Do we need to close session?
No, sir, we're still waiting for our votes.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about it.
Okay. There are three who have five, Mary Davidson, William Hand, and Rob Overman. Stuart Flight has four votes. And then here's where you have to decide again. There are three with three votes, and I'm going to butcher his last name, Henry Gleisberg, Bill Sadler, and Virginia Spencer. And I can tell you who has two and one, and.
Could you run through those again, real quick?
Sure. With five votes each, Mary Davidson, William Hand, and Rob Overman. With four votes, Stuart Flight. With three votes, Henry Gleisberg, Bill Sadler, and Virginia Spencer.
So we need to take the last three down to one, correct? To fill out five.
That's correct. And if you're interested, Stephen Clayton, Ben Lindeman, and Mark Williamson had two, and Danny Batten had one. And then John Becker did not receive any votes.
Okay, so.
You can jot down those three names, that might be the easiest.
Okay, so.
And just submit the ballot to the clerk.
Do you have additional ballots, or?
So this is the name of the three applicants with five votes, correct?
They're, they're already seated now, so the, those, the top.
Oh, that's right.
The top four people are seated.
They're, we got terms.
So we're, we need to take the three.
Three down to one.
Down to one.
Yes, sir.
So we, we can only vote on the three.
One vote. You've got one, you can check one box.
But it can only be for one of the three?
For one of those three.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And Alderman Brinson mentioned, refresh me, sir, are there two sensitive rotate for three, three years?
Two, two or three years, two or two years.
So we need to untangle of the three that got the highest vote, who doesn't get the full term, the longest term.
Right. Anybody is open to do this? I'm not trying to take this discussion over, but I will tell you that of the three gentlemen, or the three people that's left, Bill Sadler, I know has been extremely involved in this process from the first time that there was a bike and pedestrian plan. You've probably seen him, he bikes all over the city. I would encourage you, if you're, if you don't really care, I'm, I'm putting my support behind Mr. Sadler, because I think he'd be a tremendous asset.
Do you have any information on the other two, Mr. Henry and Ms. Virginia?
Not, not other than their resumes that they provided. And nothing against them, I'm just supporting Mr. Sadler.
I got a word, I'll just change it.
Thank you, Sidney Clerk, for putting the asterisk beside them, you're so smart.
Trying to help.
Thank you. What would we do without you?
And just the, the last thing, Mr. Mayor, is to decide between Davidson, Hand, and Overman, who will have the two-year term? The other two will have three. Let me just, whatever you all.
Alphabetically.
Anybody opposed to giving them the terms based off of alphabetically for the type, for the number of years?
Spineless.
Okay.
So that would be Mr. Overman. If I can do it alphabetically.
Very rare that O's are at the top of that list, I can tell you, but if he's there, then congratulations.
Six, excuse me, six votes for Bill Sadler, one vote for Virginia Spencer.
All right, Mr. Sadler it is. Do we need to decide anything else?
No, sir, just, let's have the clerk repeat back all that for the record, just so we're all clear.
Sure.
All of them, or just who's going to fill the seats?
By term, yes.
Oh, well, I'll have to pull that from the tape.
I mean, but you've got it in front of you, you've got the, the two high votes for five, that are, that are, that are by alphabetically for the two-year term.
The three high votes with five are Mary Davidson, William Hand, and Rob Overman.
Okay, so the top two, H and A, serve the longer term. Overman goes to the next lower term, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Stuart Flight had four votes.
Same term as, as.
Two term.
Overman. And Sadler takes the.
And then Bill Sadler.
Takes the lower term. Just to make sure we're all clear.
Okay. Everybody good? Anything else?
Thanks for your thoughts.
Thank you for everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Several of them, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.